Thank you and good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Economic and Community Development Committee meeting of the Common Council. And I will call this meeting to order at exactly seven P M. I'm Nicole Rowcall, and if anyone can everyone just a lot of boxes here. So if you can come off mute and just say that you're here. That would be great. And I'm gonna start off with Mr. Livingston, who I believe is not here yet. No. Okay, Ms. Shanahan.
I'm here.
Great. Ms. Smith?
I'm here.
Ms. Young?
Here.
Mr. Cubelman?
Present.
Thank you. I believe Mr. Meeks reached out to me, said he's not gonna be here, but if you are. No, okay. And myself, John Caides Chair is also present, so we do have a quorum. All right, great. Now I'm gonna move on to the public hearing. Proposed sale of a portion of thirty Monroe Street consisting of forty six thousand nine and ninety four square feet identified as concept property lines as and when shown in a certain map entitled zoning location in topography survey seventeen Chestnut prepared for a Sono T O D to LLC Norwalk, Connecticut dated March fourteen, two thousand and twenty three, and prepared by William W. Seymour and Associates, P. C. A copy of the survey map is provided, map provided with agenda materials. Do we have anyone? Signed up or would like to speak in regards to this item?
Yes, if anyone would like to speak, please raise your hand electronically. Now, if you're dialing in by phone, hit star nine. We do have one person right now.
Great. If you just announce your name and.
Doug Peoples, if you can unmute. Doug, are you there? I see him unmuted, Doug. We cannot hear you. He is unmuted.
I guess.
Yep. I don't don't see anyone else.
Going once, going twice. Three times. Okay, no one else, Larry?
No one else.
Okay, all right. So we will now close the public hearing. And move to our next public hearing, which is for the P Y forty nine C D B G Annual Action Plan. If anyone would like to speak to that, and please raise your hand electronically, and you will be unmuted.
Yes, we have Diane Laricella. All right, Diane.
Yes, thank you, Larry. Thank you, Chairman, and I really appreciate that we do still have the ability to come to these meetings virtually. I it's been a big help for me. The reason I decided to I'm gonna I'm waiting to speak on the main agenda items, but I wanted to speak briefly, especially with Brian there, Mr. Bedoli, on this action plan. As you can see, this is not the first time where there is no one else or almost no one else that is coming to speak and probably even have read this document. Mr. Chairman, in order to open up the process for next year, even after this meeting, if there's a chance that there could be some rigorous or creative announcements of this very important document that has a lot to do with the future of our city, it's an important document, but no hardly anyone in town knows about it. Except for you all, and of course, the redevelopment agency. As far as the actual action plan, the type of action I would like to see more of are two things in general. Number one, are there limits to growth? That's something that I really think that the redevelopment agency staff have access to helping advise. You, many of you are layman, and there are lots of studies with the Regional Plan Association and National Studies, many consultants that we've hired, like U L I, who I have a lot of respect for, they've just been hired to do our affordable housing study. But the thing is, are there limits to growth in our city in light of some issues with climate change, water restrictions, et cetera? Are we planning to have? What action steps are we gonna take to see how much is enough? And and are there any kind of thermometers? The second thing that I would love to see in this action plan, and it still isn't, and I have an open request, is let's take a look also at our talk our industrial history and some of the toxins that have been left behind that do affect the ability for our city to redevelop into beyond brownfields. Brownfields is a misnomer at times. It's it's a very limited term that's being used widely in Norwalk. But in general, for those of you on the call and the council of brown, we have brownfields in the terminology that's being used by redevelopment agency and the Planning and Zoning Department that have not been identified and a status of them, many have been cleaned up either privately or because of orders by the E P A. But I recently had a lot of, I participated broadly in the industrial waterfront zoning special study, and I think it was terrific that we had such a study, but unfortunately, the consultant, I believe, because I listened to the planning and zoning commissioners discussing it, I don't do not think that they have been allowed to properly determine in a map where we currently still have brownfields or polluted sites right along our harbor. So I do, and I know that when redevelopment agency has gone out to get grants, as they have recently for the Webster lot, and I congratulate them on getting a grant to do studies for, which is part of my wheelhouse, doing phase one, phase two, phase three environmental site assessments. It's just for specific sites, and I think we need a broad based status check of all the sites that the state of Connecticut had pinpointed when I worked for them back in the eighties, and there still are some sites that have not been cleaned up, and in my opinion, professionally speaking, are ticking time bombs. And so I'm not gonna mention them tonight. I have been attempting to meet with Mr. Bedoli, who's very busy. And I have also solicited my concern with our health director, and I will very soon be clarifying where those sites are, because I have in the past mentioned them. So thank you for your time. I think that has to be part of our action plan is our toxic legacy. That way, we can be clean. Our harbor can be clean, our shelf multimillion dollar shellfish industry can have less worry, and we can put those fields into good tax based, we can put those brownfields into greenfields that we can reap the tax base, the property tax that they really should be. Thank you.
Larry, is there anybody else signed up for the second public hearing?
There is not.
Okay, I will close the second public hearing and move on to public participation. If there's anyone that would like to speak to any item on the agenda, please raise your hand electronically, and you will be unmuted.
Yes, we have Rich Bonifat. Rich, you can unmute.
Evening. Can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thanks. Um, I thought I was trying to raise my hand before. Hey, this is pretty cool. You can be like drinking a beer and watching a hockey game and pause that for a second and chime in on something you got going. Thanks.
Right, let me. Oh, sorry.
Okay, no, I wasn't done. I'm just getting started. Okay, the project on Chestnut Street, just wanna chime in on that one for a second. I don't think that the city should be paying for like the sidewalks and the infrastructure and the pipes that go underneath it. Cause I don't think you should be wasting your federal dollars that came in a grant on something that this guy should be paying for himself, right? He's already getting a break from the enterprise zone, so there's gonna be no taxes, well, a phased in or however you formulate that. So he's getting a nice tax break with the enterprise zone there, and he's in a T D zone. They don't have to pay for too many parking spaces either, all right? That's all shrunk down. Okay, so you can maximize that out. So, you know, why is the city wasting pavement money on this project when that guy should be paying for it, and you could be paving some other spot instead, okay? There you go. But hey, thanks a lot. Nice to see y'all and best wishes.
Thank you, Mr. Bonifat. Enjoy that beer, buddy.
Next, we have Diane Laricella. Diane?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and committee. Rich is a hard act to follow. Anyway, thank you for allowing virtual testimony here. I just wanted to comment on a couple of items on the agenda tonight. First of all, you're gonna be speaking about approving the final fiscal year twenty twenty four capital budget. As many of you know, it's usually a five year budget, and it can change from year to year. I ask again that this August body deny any expenditures that are still on our budget for any artificial turf field, any artificial turf playing field going forward. We have three in the hopper. And one received a five million dollar Broad River, a five million dollar grant, so of course, is not within your purview here tonight. But there are many more parts of these projects. And I have stated that I believe we have to to have your informed vote on this topic in the capital budget from year to year. You have to have a apples to apples, cradle to grave discussion of natural turf fields that are well maintained and drained versus artificial turf fields, and that has not happened in this city, and I've been asking for years. Number two, any autos automobiles and trucks purchased. I have sat through numerous public hearings and capital budgets over the years, and I know that this, the council does intend to urge our departments that use these cars and and trucks to go into alternative fuels or electric, but they are hesitant. They're slow rolling it. They will only do it faster if you make them do it faster. And most recently, I sat in yesterday when the Board of Ed asked for a rack body truck with the Land Use and Building Management Committee. And there are plenty of electric rack body trucks that could handle the situation, but they have maybe not been looking at doing their due diligence because they went with propane, which is a fossil fuel, as many of you know. So those are the two main outstanding things related to capital budget that I've spoken about before, and I ask that you consider lapping it off. And then lastly, C one under the thirty parking lots for the Norwalk area lodge. The only reason I decided to speak on that very briefly is that I'm quite worried about the status of the Jason Milligan property that we're currently renting. And I hope that this thirty parking lots is not going to be in replacement of that site. So I just wanted food for thought. I ask you to ask serious questions about what this city is doing with the Jason Milligan lot, right, that we're currently using for library parking. Thank you for your evening, for your listening to me, and have a great evening.
All right, Chairman Caides, we do not have anyone else.
Thank you, Larry. Okay, we will now close public participation and move on to administration and one A, and that's the approval of the minutes of March second, two thousand and twenty three meeting. Would someone like to move that? Thank you, Ms. Shanahan. I actually have a correction that was passed on to me from a committee member, Mr. Livingston. And that's to change the on page two, the fifth paragraph, to change live to Y M C A. So that's that correction. Does anyone else have any corrections, deletions, omissions before I call for a vote?
Okay. Could I say one thing right as we closed it out? Doug Peoples did raise his hand. I don't know if we can. He raises hand right is.
Yeah, I mean, yes, that's fine. So actually, let's take care of this piece of business, and then we'll go back. Thank you, Ms. Shanahan, for moving that item. Seeing there were no other corrections, I will now call for a vote on the minutes as amended. Please raise your hand to signify yes.
All right.
All right, extensions. Let the record show Ms. Smith abstained the minutes passed. Okay, let's go back, and I believe we have someone to speak.
He lowered his hand again. Mr. Peoples, if you'd like to speak, please raise your hand now. Okay, there we go. All right, please unmute. Yeah, it looks like he's still having problem with his problem with his audio.
Well, we get an A for effort.
Yep, okay.
Okay, moving on, public participation closed. You've moved the minutes, and now we're going on to what majority of you are here for, and that's item two A, the F Y two thousand and twenty four capital budget. Item A one is to advance the F Y twenty twenty three capital budget to the Common Council for approval with a noted amendments. Would someone like to move that item? Thank you, Ms. Smith. Okay, um, for you, those have been with us for a while, you kind of know how I do it. I'd like to have everyone to, when you're called upon to go through each individual item, even if it hasn't been recommended for funding, just give us a brief, brief being the key word, description of that item. And and if anyone on the committee has any questions, feel free to chime in. Like, there's a lot of a lot of boxes here, so if you could unmute and with your question, that would be great. I'm gonna go out of order here, just because I know there's a there's a bunch of people here with this one or two quick items, so no point in having them stay. So that being said, I'm gonna move to Cleppin with with planning and zoning. There when the item, yeah, Planning and Zoning Commission, starting with item plotter. Steve, are you here with us? There you go.
I am. Thank you for letting me go first. I sorry to everybody else.
Oh, me big time.
Sure. So we actually have two items. We have a plotter that was previously approved for funding. We just haven't acted on those funds yet. We do have two new requests this year. One of those is a study of the Norton site that proposal came out of the industrial zone study. Basically, the consultant team and the group that were overseeing the study came to the kind of realization that Norton site was kind of so unique in the way it's situated, because it's kind of pinned between the railroad tracks and ninety five. It has no access to the highway. You have to access it through local streets. And given its large size, it really should be treated by itself, so they kind of recommended looking at it separately. So that's what those funds are for, and that comes to a total of fifty thousand dollars. Initially, we thought of doing a larger study and then kind of looking at it from a transportation angle as well, like seeing if there are ways that we could perhaps, you know, see about highway access. But that's really beyond the realm of like a local land use plan, and be something we probably would need to request and work with Connecticut D O T on. So that's what the fifty thousand dollars will be specifically land use issues. And the second item is a follow up on the zoning regulations rewrite. We talked about this previously, I think. Once the the regulations are adopted, you know, we receive a static document from the consultant. What we would like to do is take that document and put it in a more user friendly format for, you know, the average resident or realtor or, you know, business owner even. Where basically, this would be an interactive mapping platform where someone could put in their address into this. Up would pop up the zoning information related to their property. It would be linked to the city's G I S, so it has a tax assessment information connected to that as well. And ultimately, the long term goal would be we would get all of our historic building permits and zoning permits scanned and organized, and then linked to this as well, so we could have kind of a master repository of information related to individuals' property. So there's two components to the cost. One is like a one time training fee where the the consultant would come in and work with staff for a few days to get the information organized, as well as train people on how to use the software, and then there's an ongoing maintenance cost that goes along with that. Those are the two items in a nutshell.
Steve, I don't know if I missed it, but the plotter, which you didn't get recommended funding for.
Yeah, that we received that in a prior budget year, so I'm not sure if there's confusion, but we did. I think that was last year we received the funds.
Okay, okay. Any questions for Steve? No. All right, Steve, thank you, and enjoy the rest of your night.
Thank you very much. You too.
Okay, now we're gonna go on to the Police Department. Do we have Chief, are you with us? Chief Walsh, are you here with us? Someone from the Police Department here to speak on on the budget? All right, I'll let the record show Mr. Livingston has joined us at seven twenty two P M. All right, so we'll go back to the Police Department. Now I'm gonna move on to the Fire Department. I know Chief Goddard won't be with us. Do we have someone from the Fire Department that's gonna speak to the budget?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, Assistant Chief Ed McCabe. I'll begin our our part, and then Chief Conti is also here, so he will he will chime in on the second part of our budget requests. So thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, committee, for having us tonight. The first item on our capital budget request summary is S C B A face piece and regulator replacement. This replaces the current S C B A face pieces and regulators to an upgraded model. There have been several failures with the current self contained breathing apparatus face pieces, causing the manufacturer Scott to issue a safety notice. So this money will allow us to upgrade all of our S C B A faces to the newest model and and be able to retire the ones that we've experienced failures with. The second item is OSHA mandated turnout gear replacement. So all of our firefighters have two sets of protective turnout gear, a primary set and a secondary set that they use when the first set is being washed after a fire. The department has a very strict cancer preventative initiative. So as soon as a firefighter goes into a fire, when they return to the station, we require them to wash all of their gear to get the carcinogens out, which is the the purpose of having the second set of gear. However, some of those second sets of gear within the department were older than ten years old, even though they'd been inspected and serviced. When OSHA came through, they mandated that all of those sets of gear that were older than ten years be replaced. So this money will allow us to to do that and to get all of our turnout gear in the department under ten years old. The next item is a replacement of rescue apparatus. Norwalk Fire Department has one rescue truck that operates out of headquarters. The rescue truck responds to all motor vehicle accidents. It responds to the highway, to the parkway, and then any specialized rescues that happen in town. So elevator rescues, trench, high angle, basically any condition that's difficult to require specialty tools, the rescue truck rolls on. This money will allow us to replace our nineteen ninety three rescue truck and then take the current two thousand and eight rescue truck and use that as a spare, keeping within our apparatus replacement schedule. The fourth item is a addition and renovation to Station Four, which is our station on Westport Avenue. The reason for this renovation is it will allow us to reallocate a company, an existing ladder company to Westport Avenue. The the reason that this comes up is that several studies and several studies and that have been done in the past for the city of Norwalk, most recently the Evergreen, but going back as far as the Tri Data report and the Matrix report have recognized Station Four's district, which is Norwalk High School District, Westport Avenue, and out into the Cranberry District to the Wilton Westport Line as the one district in town that's somewhat underserved for fire protection and EMS protection, because it is only serviced by the one engine company on Westport Avenue. Doing this renovation and this small addition to the station will allow us to move a ladder company up to Station Four, placing two fire apparatus in that station and another four firefighters. And this serves two purposes. It'll allow eight firefighters to respond first on scene to a structured fire in Station Four's district, doubling the manpower that we're able to put on scene currently. And it will also put a backup company or a redundant company in the station for EMS calls. So currently, for an EMS call in that district, Engine Four will roll as a first responder. Will get to the scene first and has the ability to defibrillate a patient, to give them oxygen, to treat trauma, basically take care of the incident until the hospital ambulance arrives. However, with Engine Four doing eighteen hundred and forty calls last year, commonly, they'll be out on a call and a second call will come in. So when that second EMS call comes in or a structure fire be whatever that second call is, now we're waiting for a fire company from Broad River or from East Norwalk to run into Cranberry and respond to that call, extending an already long response time to that scene. So this addition will also allow us to take that second company, reallocate them to Station Four, and provide some redundancy in that district. And we feel that this is a fiscally responsible addition. It is basically just providing enough space for the extra four firefighters in the second piece of apparatus. And as far as the details on that renovation, I will let Chief Conti, who does our building, speak a little bit on that.
Good evening, everybody. Thanks for having us. Yes, I did a lot of research with architects and builders, and we basically, and I actually, and Alan Lowe as well. We came up with a very fiscally responsible, small addition out the back with no basement to just really fill in the back to have enough room for another office and living space to accommodate the extra four firefighters that would be there. It would also in turn allow us to renovate the the building to, especially with the bathroom facilities right now, that we we have some locks on some doors just to make it the adequate privacy for all genders, and it right now, it needs a full renovation to make it to make it right, similar to what we're gonna be doing at Station Five. So this would be all encompassing, and it will allow for those companies to adequately exist there. The big point is that right now, also, it's with training, our trucks typically when we have like at Station One and at Station Two, we have truck companies with the engine companies, and now they're able to train and they're able to cross train. And now we have enough, we have, we're doubling the amount of people that are qualified for both types of pieces, where we don't have that right now. We're, we have companies stacked up. Station Four, it's as far as the call volume. Station Four is over a little bit over twenty percent of our call volume, as is Station One, which has a truck company. And Station Two is still our busiest, it's about thirty five percent of the calls. So this will better, you know, distribute the resources and more evenly distribute the resources and not and it'll also allow a ladder company to not to be east of the river, which is basically our choke points. Every every time we have to go there, that's that's what slows us down. We're averaging our second due company there in the last five years to ten years. It's pretty consistent. We're averaging about two and a half to three minutes behind the first due company, Engine Four, that gets there, and that's that's a lot of time, and we were this this will greatly reduce it. You're gonna be arriving on scene at one time with eight companies.
It will also allow the it will also allow those two companies to begin at a structured fire rescue efforts and fire suppression efforts simultaneously. Where right now, with one engine company arriving alone in the first few minutes, they don't have the ability to to perform rescue and suppression simultaneously. And and I might add, I've mentioned the studies in the past that have recommended that the protection in this district be beefed up. And all of those studies have suggested an extra station, so a Station Six, which would involve hiring sixteen more firefighters and would involve buying a new piece. And would involve buying a new piece of apparatus and finding the land in Cranberry somewhere to put this station on. Realizing the the economic condition that the city's in right now and that those those moves would be cost prohibitive. We feel that reallocating the existing resources to the existing building is is really the way to go and would would provide the protection needed.
Yeah, and just one quick, that being said, what the chief said is is. We went with a full cost analysis with with our conceptual drawing and and that's where the existing building we we can come in. We it's basically, I'm going to bring it up now. So we're talking really as far as as far as an addition interior renovation. It's a thousand square foot renovation, it's it's very modest and it's going to allow for enough room, so this is this was the. Working with everybody, this was the least invasive way to to bring that station up to. To to code and to similar what to what I did to Station One last year where we. Where we actually upgraded the HVAC system to allow for proper ventilation, all of these things are involved in this, this is a whole package. At once, the renovation plus the addition.
Very good. Chief Conti, do you want to handle the next the next four items then?
Sure, the. Number five is the shift command car replacement. So what we what we were doing is replacing our command vehicle as. Appropriate to our eight year command vehicle replacement. We're actually replacing our. Command software, right now we're using whiteboards and we have magnets and we move things around with whiteboards, which is working very well. But we're upgrading to a an automated system that actually registers firefighters. Accountability system that registers firefighters on scene with computer software and can monitor their air supply. They can, we can actually hold an accountability report to find wherever essentially a roll call. On scene instantly through the air packs, it's far more efficient and safe, if we have to evacuate a building, we can push a button and evacuate the building. And even if companies from Stanford show up on scene, they'll actually be a part of the system. This is something that we've been researching for a while, New Haven uses it religiously and it's it's. Basically, the best of we we. Thing you can buy right now, we're transitioning that we we were funded that last year, so we're actually building that right now as we speak. This, the new cars is going to allow to accommodate, will basically be able to accommodate all the new type of technology involved in in utilizing this. This this software. The Station Five Bathroom Innovation Number Six, that again, as I mentioned earlier, that's that's basically I have drawings and. Cost analysis to improve, to renovate the the well needed renovation. But to also allow for privacy, appropriate privacy with private bathrooms, private showers for all genders, all firefighters. Fire inspector vehicle replacement. We have two more pickup trucks coming in, what we've done is we've transitioned. With our eight year plan, we have to with our replacement plan, we've also transitioned to pickup trucks, allowing again with our. Cancer preventative initiative. To allow for any gear and any tools that they use in investigation to be separate from the cab that they're driving around and inspecting vehicles all day. And the Maintenance Division, number eight, Maintenance Division Electrical Upgrade, LED Light Upgrade. So that was that's been withdrawn because we actually struck a deal. With Southern with South Norwalk Electric and they essentially funded. Half the project for us and we're we and we're funding it through the the cost savings that were with the LED lights as opposed to the old sodium lights. And that's a cost savings of twelve thousand, over twelve thousand dollars for the first year and then. For the second year beyond, it's over twenty five thousand, so that one has paid for itself already, which is great, so we had, we were able to withdraw that. And for our building repairs, our normal thirty five thousand dollar maintenance repairs, most of that right now is going to be, we have a. Major initiative to replace our overhead doors that are aging and obviously those are vital to our emergency response. We can take any questions if anybody has any.
Yeah, I have a quick comment, I mean, I I'm familiar with Station Four, just going back a few items. You guys have put a lot of work into it, I see, I mean, obviously the price tag is high. And also you're buying the new fire truck, but I'd like to, you know, if it doesn't happen this year, I'd love to see this thing get. Funded and recommended by the mayor next year. So no, like I said, we've already spent money on architectural plans and it's be a waste to put that money and effort to something that and then. Not become to fruition. Any questions for fire before we let them go? No, thank you very much, gentlemen.
Thank you, Chairman Caides, thank you, committee.
Thank you very much.
Okay, we're going to go back to. The police, Chief Walsh, I believe is with us, is that correct?
Yes, he's dialed in, I'm having him unmute now.
Thank you, Larry.
Chief Chief Walsh just hit star six. On your phone.
Okay, I'm here, can you finally hear me?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. My my apologies, I thought Mr. Dossmo was on the meeting tonight, but. He had unforeseen obligation, he wasn't able to come on, yes, for the our capital request for this year, it is the normal. Request for vehicles and vans, police cars and vans and the outfits. And the two outboard engines for Marine Two. Those outboard engines have well over a thousand hours on them and we're having mechanical difficulty and that is our. Main vessel for rescue. And responding to shallow water and such, so those engines are very tired and we have spent a lot of money. In repairing those last year, so they are in due of replacement. So those are only two items, are the cars and the vans. And the. Outboard engines, it is a boat that has two engines on it. So that's why we need two engines and they average about a high forty a piece, forty five to fifty thousand dollars a piece. Once installed.
Chief Cars and Vans, can you get a little bit more detail on that, like are we? Police cars, I mean, how many cars, like just any any more specific on that?
Yeah, that that's been a moving target for the past previous years. As a, this year we found out, we have not gotten a new police car since two thousand twenty one fiscal year. Ford has run into major production issues. We actually had an order of fifteen cars ordered with Ford in January, they advised us that. They will not be able to fill that order. And that price went from thirty nine thousand dollars a car to forty nine thousand dollars a car. So within the past two months, we recently went to the Chevy police package. And those are on order, so we're still working with cars that are two to three years old and they have high mileage and. They're hot seated, what we call hot seating, three shifts a day, so they all have high mileage and we're averaging. Seven to ten cars a day down at the fleet being repaired. So the police industry nationwide has been plagued with difficulty in finding. Police cruisers. The Ford Explorer is, I guess they're converting away from the traditional model, so they stopped making them and there's nine thousand orders nationwide. That they haven't been able to fill. So. We're going to be able to buy the Chevy police package, but the price is continually fluctuating. So I can't give you the exact number that will be able to purchase because even the outfits have been raised ten thousand dollars. So we're probably going to, that money is probably going to be eight, eight to nine marked police cars. For the next year's fleet.
Are we still? Yeah, Chief, that's interrupt, sorry, but there was a, I forget the details, but there was a buying program through the state. For the vehicles, is that still how you purchase these vehicles through some? Program that's discounted rates or I forget this, like I said, the specifics, but. Remember, there was a process on which how you guys buy, it's not like you just go to the local Chevy dealer and, you know, order, you know, order them off the lot, right?
Yeah, you're absolutely right, you're absolutely correct. That was through MHQ and they are the state provider on the state bid pricing, but due to the fact that. They primarily work with Ford, state, the state of Connecticut is primarily a Ford. Police package, all you see is the Ford Explorer, so when we went to the Chevy this year because we needed police cars. We actually joined the Massachusetts Police Consortium. For a small price of like two hundred and seventy five dollars, so we are in the state bid pricing. So we're getting the the best pricing for our police package cars, but they're coming from Massachusetts instead of Connecticut.
That's what it was. Thanks, any questions for Chief Walsh? No, all right, thank you, Chief, for your time.
I apologize for the delay.
No worries at all. Okay, now we're going to move to you as well, we're going to move on to. Finance and I believe we have Mr. Ellis with us tonight in Henry's absence. Is that correct? Tom? I caught you off guard.
No, I have I have an alternate microphone and I sometimes I did it on the screen and I forget to hit the button, but anyway. We just have a few items here in finance. Chitzenay and Joyce Lou are also here to. Speak to their items and the first one up is is Chitzenay for. Time and attendance time clocks and this one other thing, John, you mentioned earlier that. The plotter with Steve Kleppin, so what I had done when I I sent this out, I left last year's approved items on there just as a reference point. So it was a one time buy without a carryover, I just left it on there so that you guys could see what was. In the pipeline and perhaps if they had finished or not, so. Anyway, moving on, Chitzenay.
The Accounting and Treasury Department handles the payroll functions for both the city and the Board of Ed and we're looking to replace our time clocks. Currently, currently we have sixty five clocks located throughout the city and Board of Ed buildings. We have around twenty hundred, twenty one hundred Board of Ed employees and nine hundred city employee. That use these time clocks to swipe in their badge and it tracks their time in attendance. The lifespan of these clock is around six to eight years and most of our clocks are over six years old. So we are requesting for the capital budget of a hundred fifty thousand dollars to place these. Equiments throughout, you know, city and Board of Ed buildings.
Any questions to that from the committee?
All right, then next up is Joyce with the IT side.
All right, good evening, everyone, we have a total ten item in the IT capital request, aid over then are aligned with P O C D code. Eleven point one B is continue to update and modernize, maintain no works infrastructure. And the city facilities and two of them items are aligned with the P O C D thirteen point two A for. Use data to drive decision making. So out of this ten items, five of them are continuing IT requests in capital budget. For the server, computer, printer, monitor and other equipment. And that are fixed assets that will last for three to five years. And so even IT have a repeated request for each year, but is on the rotation base of the different fixed assets. So I do have a ten items, but there are, well, the five item are the, you know, the repeating, so I probably will focus on the. Five new items that we are down for this year's capital budget. The first one is data storage server upgrade is hundred forty five thousand dollars. We refresh the storage server on the five year schedule. The capital request is to replace the data storage server that locating one of our data center. Current server was installed in two thousand eighteen and you will reach its five year lifespan end of this year. And the new server will have the up to date technology and flash storage with much faster response time compared to the older hard drives. So this request including hardware, server license, installation and the five year maintenance. The second item is a citywide network infrastructure upgrade. That's four hundred thousand dollars. While we're moving lots of software and service into the cloud, the existing network cannot handle cities' daily operation anymore. So that this project is to replace the three core switches in our data centers. This course which is support as a backbone, right? So it bridge all the computers and routing the traffic. Course switches upgrade the performance of a network and the performance of network, you know, is to increase our performance. Daily performance for each each employee, so a good course which is normally lasts between eight to ten years. And our existing networks which are more than ten years old now. So we also, in this project, we will also replace all fifty classes which is for all the city location. Item three, citywide G I S project, so this is a hundred fifty thousand dollars. This is for G I S street, street level imagery of one hundred thousand dollars. And plus the urban three D planning for the Arc G I S ten license. Plus the base slider map for the. The plan your zoning department. So our last street level image was in two thousand eighteen, five years ago. So since G I S technology is now widely using among all city department. We would like to keep a fixed updating schedule for the street level imagery. So the new street level image will capture approximately five hundred total miles of a city street. And with a very high resolution of a hundred mega pixel. And well, with that, we have, we will have a very high measurement of accuracy. This quote, well, it's also including hosting the imagery, unlimited user access. Software with function tools that allow us to fully utilize the imagery throughout the whole entire city. Number item four, Health Department, Environmental and Health Software. This one, okay, that's a hundred ten thousand dollars. For this project, so this project is to replace the Health Department's existing legacy health environmental software. The current system was built in Visual Foxborough that is no longer supported by Microsoft. Though the consultant that created software really stopped supporting the system and now it's really. This dated software is managed and maintained by IT department, but we are just barely keep it alive. So Health Department is looking around other city and town to evaluate. Evaluate couple environment, environmental health system. And IT and Health Department will use this capital request to put together a software R I P. What we are looking for is a cloud based platform that can do administration of the. Following service. Sanitarium inspection, license, permits, plan review, reports, all kinds of regulations. The amount we're asking for is also including initial data convergent and possible possibly, you know, if there's some money left, possible customization. Item number five. Actually, item number five. Seven, eight, nine, ten will be, well, repeating. How we're refreshed, so I'm moving on to the six, the item. An A V upgrade and to conference and meeting rooms. So we are asking fifty thousand dollars to procure a install total five smart board for four, four, five. Of fire station and one for the Community Service Department. We are also looking for a meeting recording equipment. So to in prepare for future in person meeting hybrid recording, so that is what we are planning for. So that's the end of my item, so is, do you have any question? I'm happy to answer.
Seeing no questions, thank you, ladies, thank you, Tom, for your time.
So, Chair, Mr. Chairman, I just have a question, I'm. Are we looking at just this this one, one point, I'm sorry, it's one point three million, one point eight million, is that what this is? Because I don't have a breakdown per. Item that you just described or one point one million.
I can talk to that, Dave, oh, yeah. I can talk to that, Dave. Oh, yeah.
Yeah, I'd like to understand why other, we we see breakdowns of other departments by project, but we're seeing just one lump sum for technology services. And I'm not understanding why that was done that way.
All right. Okay, so this is what's done like um always being this way because lots of the items that they are all under one. Um, well, hardware and refresh and sometimes this, um, the, the, the the budget could be um over for some item, but it could be under for another. So we're using this to have this ten sub items. So the sub item like, you know, like um change from time to time. But you know, most of the time, like, like I said, eighty-five percent of those are um most of it's for uh uh hardware and software and and also for um so for servers. So those are, that's why we put in one big item, but i- if you go to the uh details, there is a capital budget um detail for all the item itemized for each one. This is easier for us to manage the the budget because like, you know, like I um lots of a software and hardware, like the, 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 the value varies. So we don't want to fix for each, each, you know, for each item. You know, for, you know, each, put it up, each of the sub item into the one uh into different kind of capital request.
Right. So there, so all the items impact the other items. You need all of those same items in that one line item that we're looking at at one point one million.
Yes, and they are all going to be under one um accounting um G L account code. So when we do the purchase and 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 we do the procurement, then we will always know that this is uh this pile of money it was going to spend on this ten projects.
Okay, thank you.
All right, and John, I actually had one item uh for my area and my management and budgets. Am I good to go?
Yeah.
Okay, uh, so i- and just to uh follow up on on David's point. If you're looking for all the detail of the the items that Joyce mentioned, it should be in your budget book, the two-inch binder that uh that we sent out with uh the CFO's recommendations. And that dovetails nicely into our project. It's uh uh forty thousand dollars for a digital budget book. So instead of those two-inch binders, if you're tired of tired of lugging those around and storing them, we are looking at software that's available out there that helps to automate the budget book process. Both on the operating side and the capital side, and depending on the vendor, we might be able to uh, you know, have the Board of Ed on on uh on the digital platform as well. If you're interested in seeing the type of technology that's out there, the town of Darien has one one vendor, the town of Westport has another, and they're really uh pretty impressive package, packages. So instead of flipping through all the pages, two or three clicks, you can find whatever section you're looking for. You can print out whatever you're look, whatever you're interested in. Um, or if you want the whole three hundred-plus-page package, you can print that out as well. Um, though we will still still do the binders um uh on on demand, I should say. There are some towns like Darien that do not print binders any longer. They they encourage people to to go online. So if this gets approved, we'll be uh going out and looking at the various vendors and trying to come up with the best package that works for the city.
Good to see another hands. Thanks, Tom.
Thank you, and that's it for finance, John.
Okay, um, we're gonna bounce over to the W P C A. Ralph, are you with us tonight?
Hi, hi, John, I am.
Yes. How are you, sir?
Good evening, everyone. Doing well. Uh, W P C A has one request for capital, and that's in the collection system. And we're looking to uh last year in September, we submitted a collection system master plan update to the Connecticut Deep. It's part of a consent order, and in that plan, they identified three projects to complete over the next five years. The the first one is Hubble's Lane Relief Sewer, uh Catch Basin Disconnect Program and um elimination of the Anne Street Emergency Overflow. So that request that we have, it's like ten point eight five million, includes those three projects.
Great. Anyone? Okay. Quick and to the point. Great.
Thank you very much, everyone.
Thank you, Ralph. Okay, now we're gonna jump over to redeveloping Mr. Bedoli.
Sorry about that. Yep, sorry, I wasn't on. So yeah, I have two requests tonight. Um, the one before you is related to the Webster Lot project and the South Norrock T O D. And basically what's related to is urban core infrastructure funds that we need for design, design, engineering, and planning services related to advancing those projects. Also, that request is for two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Um, will help us with some, you know, traffic analysis and and various studies that we'll need to do in order to provide you all the data and to help, you know, the decision-making process move forward. Um, in terms of these three hundred fifty thousand dollar requests we have is for the Sono Warf, uh, the trail project. A lot of you were involved in the initial design efforts, but we were had requested um was three hundred fifty thousand dollars to advance those to final design. Um, as I understand, that's not supported. Uh, but wanted to kind of, you know, offer any uh providing any updates that you may need or any questions you may have.
See, Brian, seeing no questions for that, you mind just a quick uh description of the other two items that you didn't get uh recommended?
Uh, there was the two. There was the south, the urban core funds for South for Webster Lot, South Norrock, and then the Sono Warf. Those are the only two we had for capital.
What's the affordable housing, Sono Train, roadway, and infrastructure funds with the E C D three million? What's uh?
Oh, that's, sorry.
They appear to be, um, yeah, they appear to be previously funded um capital projects, Brian, that are that you're not requesting new funding for, but um but uh uh projects that you have in the in the hopper.
Yeah, in front of me, so, yeah.
Okay, any questions for Brian? Okay, stick around, Brian. You got something else after this, as you know. Great. Well, we're gonna bounce over to uh Lamont Daniels at Community Service. Lamont, are you with us?
I, evening, I'm with you. I'm I'm at a training, so uh bear with me. I'm trying to find a.
Brief is better.
Oh, I like that word. So very quickly, uh, and Shirelle is here to quickly walk through. But as you can see, um, the Health Department, we're asking for the forty-five thousand for security up, for security up upgrades. We've been working with Neil from Guardian. Uh, quite frankly, uh, the last time this system has been upgraded was over twenty years, and this also uh strengthens uh when things happen or unfortunate when someone breaks in. Uh, we will have those direct connections with police and fire. Uh, so we've been working with uh the Guardian to uh put, put a quote together, and this is pretty uh what we would need to move forward on it, and we love your support to really uh execute this as soon as possible.
So, Ms. Harris, good evening.
Good evening. Oh, hold on, can you hear?
Summarize for them, uh, just kind of the, there's our five things that the mayor recommended for the library.
That was gonna be my question. So just the five things?
No, if you could, just briefly, just the
Go through all of them? Okay.
Items you requested, but yet, you know, it wasn't recommended, if you, if you will, please.
Sure, I'll just go through, I'll just go through them quickly. So the first was um uh, the main library is not ADA compliant when it comes to the doorknobs. So um the American Disabilities Act, um, so basically we're just not compliant. We have the traditional doorknobs that are found in homes, but the um ADA requires a tighter grip. Um, I mean, those require the tighter grip twisting motions, you know, on the wrist, and that that's out of compliance with the ADA recommendations. So we're looking for the lever style um that meets the ADA requirements. Uh, Neil from Guardian and William, I could never say his last name correctly. He's our new um ADA coordinator. Um, they are, they were collaborating on this project, so um they came up with um the replacement for the sixty interior doors and the three exterior doors in addition to sliding doors. And the cost breakdown for that was it looked like five hundred uh per lockset and um twelve thousand seven hundred for the sliding doors. And moving on to um, we requested a library van. Um, our current van is sixteen years old. It's uh rear wheel drive. And, you know, it needs to be replaced. We have um our driver doors open, you know, without force. There's lots of wear and tear. And um so we basically use the van, you know, for runs uh between the libraries. Um, runs to the city dump, uh restocking the libraries off-site collections like the beach, the train station, the tax department, et cetera. And so we gave um options, we gave options for the electric, we gave options for uh gas, and we gave options for the high roof so that the guys don't have to bend over. Everyone's always complaining about bad backs, and this allows them to stand in the van as they're, you know, taking things in and out. Um, our third request. And please feel free to stop me if you have any questions. Our third request was for integrated library system. And um so just in layman's terms, it's the computer that you go to when you're searching, um, you know, for items when you come into the library. It's also the system that we use behind the scenes, you know, for check-in and check-out. Um, we have not upgraded ours in over twenty years, and our current vendor no longer supports our upgrades with any regularity. So they've had two major upgrades since, so it's just time because they're not supporting any upgrades. And let's see, I'm just scrolling through. So everyone's favorite probably is the Norlock Hour Digitization. Um, our request is to complete the final stage of the digital, digital access to the hour. We partner with a company called Newsprint to um digitize the missing years. And right now, we have everything um um offered digitally except for the years nineteen seventy-one through two thousand six. So um these remaining uh, let's see, thirty-five non-digitalized um years are critical to Norlock history. Uh, it will help our staff to fill the many questions that come in through those years. Um, in the past, we are so grateful that you funded, um, let's see, it was the the hour um eighteen seventy-two through nineteen seventy. We've also completed uh the Norlock Gazette from eighteen eighteen through eighteen ninety-nine and the South Norlock Sentinel from eighteen seventy through nineteen forty-five. So um we just ask that, you know, we get these last thirty-five years and, you know, we'll have a complete run of Norlock's history per their newspapers. We requested, actually, this is gone over to um Guardian's budget, the Sono um Library Exterior Lighting. Um, you know, it's not adequate with people. Um, we're used to it here, but we had someone come over and say that the lighting just wasn't adequate. So Neil, Neil has done some upgrades, which is noticeable, but he's, you know, working on other, other um lighting that lights from our entrance to our parking lot. Oh, my gosh, the main library first floor carpet. Um, it stained throughout. It's nipped, ripped in many areas. Um, not only is it not aesthetically attractive, but it's also a safety hazard. Um, the rips are obvious. You know, we have some tape in some areas. We've tried to take other rugs um to put over some ribs, so um, it's just not pretty, but it's also not safe. Um, let's see, um. Main library, adult reading room furniture. So um the main library right now, we were thinking we would have been renovated by now, so we were trying to hold off on asking for capital money, but, you know, in the meantime, we have a lot of things that are just depreciating. So the main library right now, it lacks functional and visual appeal. Uh, and particularly for the older adults, uh, many people are looking to read and study, um, you know, quiet spaces. And there's just, there's no comfortable seating for the elderly. Many of home need, you know, armrests to lift themselves up. And um, you know, we, we, we have a high, the library has a high population um that's aging. As a matter of fact, we just put together a series um for the aging. And I will share that with the council um tomorrow. Well, actually, Monday. Um, so um we're just looking to upgrade, to have a place where people want to sit, but they can al- also comfortably sit and you know, read and and and, you know, some people may want to um congregate with others, maybe to study. Um, and we just, we just need furniture. I don't know if you all saw the pictures, but it it's, it's pretty dismal in there. And again, we were trying to hold off thinking the library would be renovated, but uh, we do, we really need an upgrade, you know, for our citizens. Um, the business center. Um, most of the surrounding libraries have the bu- business centers where people can go in. They can scan, they can shred, they can use the laminator, um, the industrial stapler, um, large format uh printers. And, you know, obviously, the tape dispensers, staples, paper, paper clip stands, highlighters, and things like that. And we do not. Um, people are using the library very differently post-COVID. Many people are becoming entrepreneurs or they're working from home, and we, it would be nice to be able to offer, you know, these services as, you know, people are using libraries differently. And again, you know, our surrounding libraries do have them. And I don't want Norwalk to always fall. I would love for us to be in the forefront of of these types of things. Outdoor furniture. So many, post-COVID, many people are using um public spaces um using outdoor space uh more so than indoor. Well, I shouldn't say more so, but using outdoor spaces more with the open air and um you know, just not being confi- confined inside. So we were looking to have furniture um that protects from the elements and just spaces where people can just sit and enjoy their library and in and out outdoor space. Um, we were able to secure an ARPA grant that we applied for through this Connecticut State Library um in accordance with the City of Norlock Solar Initiative. And so we did receive that, and people do use it, and it wouldn't be nice to just have some updated furniture that people can use to use the library outdoors. Um, and so our last request um is a carryover for our three-D printers. Um, our three-D printers are 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 pretty old and outdated, and so we want to replace um the three-D printers and accompanying laptops.
Any questions for Shirelle?
Yeah, I just, Shirelle, I have a question about the um the ADA compliance. And where does that, what does that do if we're not able to do that this year for the long term? Do we run the risk of of accruing any fines or are there any issues or are we grandfathered in at this point?
No, I'm not sure.
Hey, if I may, so um you may or may not be aware that uh we hired an ADA coordinator, which has been a position uh but had been challenging COVID and all the things we hear about uh recruitment. So we do have an ADA coordinator. What we decided to do was assess our priorities and prioritize, and most certainly, uh, councilmen, the libraries on here. To your question, no, we do not get fined. Our builders are grandfathered, but, you know, but we do take it seriously as we go through these processes to look at um our buildings through, through a strategic process that we, that we are embarking on as we speak uh to then uh move forward to look at how do we ensure that our buildings are accessible to all nonwalkers who enter any city or public building.
Great. Thank you, uh, Chief Daniels. I appreciate that answer, and thanks, Shirelle.
Very welcome. Does that mean we get everything? I take that as a yes.
Uh, I was saying something witty, you missed it. It was on me. You did a great job, Sherrell. There, great description explanation. Any other questions? All right. Thank you, Lamont. Thank you, Sherrell. You guys have a good night.
You too. Bye-bye.
You are.
All right, uh, as much as I would like to make Alan Low wait, uh, Mr. Low, are you here with uh to go through building management with us?
Uh, this is Neil Rennie. I will be going through the all the topics tonight.
Nice to see you, Neil.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you, uh Chair, Mr. Chairman. Uh, so we can start with uh city hall uh improvements. And we had uh, we have two items on, on that uh for city hall. We have the city hall uh front terrace and associated steps off the concert hall. And we have E V uh sustainability project we're looking to do uh for this coming season. Just continue, you want me to just continue down my list? And
If you will, please.
Okay, very good. Next item is for Roosevelt Center. Uh, we have uh ten thousand dollars in there for architectural services. As well as uh that's for uh roof replacement, some facade repairs. Um, we also had in there for two entry-exit doors, which was not uh approved or recommended uh for the courtyard handicap ramp. Uh, next line item is for Ben Franklin. Uh, design services for replacement of uh two boilers, uh boiler one and three are uh are failing. Uh, they're over fifteen years old, original co- uh condensate uh boilers and concept at that time. And that's for a hundred eighty thousand dollars. Next line item is Nathaniel Ely improvements. And that's for HVAC upgrades. We received two hundred seventy-five thousand in a prior year. And this is for the second half for the renovation. Next line item is boiler re- as actually, it says boiler replacement. It's actually a burner replacement. So we're not replacing the whole boiler, just the burner section for twenty thousand dollars. And that has some age on it. It's over twenty some odd years. Uh, the next line item is our capital replacement and v- various capital replacements and repairs fifteen fifty thousand. That's for any unforeseen uh capital projects over the uh year. Next line item is police facilities uh for locker room upgrades, two hundred thousand dollars. And stop me if you need me to go into any further detail on any, on any item. Uh, next line items, energy conservation for our various city buildings. That's for uh thirty thousand dollars. That pays for lighting, uh upgrades, energy uh, energy, other energy projects. Next uh is the main library uh for twenty thousand dollars and new intrusion burglar system. The current system is obsolete. It's over twenty, twenty some odd years old. There's two systems in there. Both are failing and we do not have the ability to uh add any uh, we wanted to do some panic devices over there. But we're, we don't have the ability, we will not support any new technology. Next slide, next line item is environmental remediation for twenty thousand dollars. We use that throughout the year for any uh, any remediation that we have to do, whether it's lead paint, asbestos, et cetera. And I think that's it. Any questions?
Thank you very much, Neil.
Thank you. Have a good evening, everyone.
You as well.
Bye now.
Okay, next up, we have uh recreation and parks. Uh, Robert, are you with us? Uh, Mr. Hughes.
Hey, good evening, Chairman. How you doing? I'm not sure if Robert was able to jump on yet, but I'll, I could jump in to not keep you guys waiting. Um, thank you for having me. Okay, so our first item, uh two hundred fifty thousand, this is for work that's needed at uh the Parks Garage. This is the new building that we acquired at Ten Tito Court. Uh, we have needed improvements for plumbing, electrical, carpentry and landscaping. Uh, the second item is our vehicle capital request. Uh, in this, we have a leaf truck. Um, it's to replace a two thousand six leaf truck. We also have a beach tractor, which is going to be used for multiple reasons down at the beach. And then we also have a request for a vehicle for our new staff electrician. Our next request uh is down at Cath Pasher Beach. We plan on doing the center bathroom renovations. Both the men's and women's room or the bathroom, we have a hundred fifty thousand dollar request for the bathrooms. Uh, this will be done by our staff plumber and carpenter in-house. Uh, next request after that, we have some athletic court renovations. Uh, we're planning to mill repave and resurface the basketball court at Fitch Park. We also have a request for a new install of the tennis and pickleball court at Rowan School. We have a request for lights at the pickleball courts at Woodward Avenue Park. And also some additional court work at Nathaniel Ely. Following that, our, our playground renovations, uh we follow a rotating list for replacement based on the age and condition of the structure. Uh, next in line would be Fox Run School, the kindergarten playground on the side of the school, and then also Woodward Avenue Park. The next item is the renovation of at the lead fields. Uh, once a year, we do uh two or three fields. This fifty thousand dollars covers the renovations of two of the athletic fields. Next request is the vets marina. We have one point eight million dollars in for the construction of the new vets marina. Uh, we're currently in design and we hope to go out to bid uh for construction later on uh this calendar year. Next item is the, the Broad River Baseball Complex, which is still under design. We have a million dollar request for the uh Broad River Baseball Complex. Following that, we have our fifty thousand dollars for our tree replacement. Uh, this replaces trees and plants, new trees uh throughout our school and park properties citywide. We also have a fifty thousand dollar request for various paving and concrete repairs throughout the parks and the schools. We then have a fifty thousand dollar repair request for our backstops and fencing. This is also citywide uh parks and schools. Following that, we have a two hundred fifty thousand dollar request for uh playground reconstruction. Uh, this is up at Cranberry Park, just to replace the existing playground, uh which is now going on sixteen years old, which is located right next to the pavilion up at Cranberry Park. Our next is to get the continuation of the master plan for Oyster Shell Park. We have a three hundred fifty thousand dollar request for uh the shade structure on top of the park. Additional benches, tables, some signage, uh wooden guard rails, some more paving and additional fencing. So we have a, this is a new capital count this year, uh falls under park sustainability. We have a hundred and sixty thousand dollar request. Uh, that includes a hundred and ten thousand dollar request for a electric uh Ford F-one-fifty and also a fifty thousand dollar request for miscellaneous um electrical infrastructure upgrades uh throughout our park buildings in order to accommodate, you know, electric vehicles. Next item is a fifty thousand dollars. This is for the Open Space Fund, this is your the request. And then our final item is the uh replacement of the Casa Grande Field and scoreboard for a hundred thousand dollars. And that wraps up my capital. Mr. Livingston.
Yeah, thanks. Uh, hey, Ken, on the, on the Rothen project, you have a pickleball there. Where are you gonna put that?
Uh, on the side of the school. Do you know where they just put the um, the outdoor classroom in? So if you, if you're looking at, if you're staying at the baseball field, looking at Rowan School uh-huh, on the right side uh down by the basketball courts.
Oh, got it. Okay. And that's a brand all-new construction, right?
Correct.
Got you. Um, okay, thanks. And the other thing I just wanted to ask, I, on the Broad River, I know it was in your um request, but it's not on the mayor's list, right?
Correct.
Okay, got you. All right. Thank you.
So, yeah, if it's not on the mayor's list, just to follow up a question, does that mean that you're still asking that it get put in at a later time or?
Uh, no, I think, I think the chairman just wanted us to, to present all of our items, whether they're requested or not. So I was just, I was just presenting the entire list of our requests.
Okay, um, and Broad River is the only one right now that's on the list that has a turf field imagined on it, right, for design?
Yes.
We are also considering maybe using grass there, so we haven't defined. It may be a combination of both because of some of the drainage that we need to do in that area. So we are still on design for that.
So you're not asking for money this year for Broad River?
Correct.
Thank you.
Good. Anybody else? All right. Thank you, Ken.
No, thank you. Have a good night.
You as well. Um, now we're gonna move up, move on to Vanessa. Sorry to make you wait. But you're up for Public Works.
Sure. Um, I also wanna introduce you. I, I have the new principal engineer here. I don't think if most of you already met him, is Jim Meahan. Um, he started with us a little over a month ago. So this year I'm gonna go through the list, but probably next year he'll be the one that will go through the list with you. Um, so I'm gonna start with operations. Um. What we're, one of the first request is for the electrical upgrades on charging station. Um, for us, in order to be able to start changing the fleet for some electrical and also to feed our hybrid cars. We wanna add a couple of uh electric chargers at operations center, so that's why is the fifty thousand dollars there. Um, the other thing under uh operations, but more under the solid waste is that we need to change the scale for the trucks. Uh, this is related to all the yard waste that is coming to the operations. That scale has settled a little bit and it's not as long. So we need to improve that one so we can have a very accurate um reading on the scale. Um, those are all related to operations. Do you guys have any questions related to it? And then I can move to engineering.
Vanessa, just on, on the, you, you're spending uh a hundred thousand dollars on a truck scale replacement. I mean, I assume you've done the analysis that it makes sense to spend that much money for the accuracy.
Yes, yes, it does. Um, it is also, it's very old. It was put up when they built the operations and then the site itself settled a little bit. So the scale is even settled with it. So we definitely need a scale there.
Okay, thanks.
Any other questions or can I move to engineering?
You're good to go.
Okay, thank you. So engineering, our first item is the structural inspection repairs. Um, you guys may remember that Connecticut DOT stopped re-inspecting all the bridges that are below a twenty feet foot span. Um, so what we do is we have to have inspection, we hire uh a designer and then we do, we have a list of which ones are priorities and we use that money to also do the small repairs or replacements that needs to happen. So that's why uh, that's the number. And one year is a little bit higher than the other because one we go with just a little design and the other we have to address some of the construction. Um, so that, that is why um on my bridge repair shows that. The structure inspection is just more for a structure engineer and some specific. And then the second one for bridge repairs is where we repair those based on that study. West Sider Street Bridge, this is part of the uh bridge program with the DOT. We actually just paid for a portion of it. Um, we are still pending permit for that one. We have money already in the account. We are just adding another thousand this year because there will be some changes in the design to accommodate the permit requirements and that's why we need a little bit of extra money. Uh, Perry Avenue Bridge Rails, uh the rails at the Perry Avenue, um not the new one that we did more uh up over on Perry. Um, it is really not looking good and we need some money to be able to abate the paint that is there and put a new one. Uh, paving management program, this is our paving program. Uh, it has been extremely successful with this new approach that we do. Now, what do we do first? And I'll, I'm gonna even go through B one, B two and B three because pre- pretty much it is one program. It's just that we break down in different uh items, so you guys can understand better how we're spending that money. But what we do first is just we, we make a list of base on our analysis on what are the streets that need to be paved. Then we coordinate with the utility companies to see if they have any capital improvements that needs to happen on that street. Um, and ask them to do, go there first. Then we also see CTV, all the drainage on those roads. And are any changes that we need to do that, we ended up now cha- being there first. So we take care of everything underground. Then on that area, if there are sidewalks, we're gonna go back and repair or replace or sometimes add sidewalks just to the streets that we are paving. Uh, T M P take care of new sidewalks. So I just wanna make that clear because we're gonna see that item again at T M P. Um, so that money goes to the sidewalks on the roads that we are planning to pave. And finally, we are paving the streets. The good thing is that we started implementing this approach a few years ago and now we are ahead of the game finally. So for instance, this year we are already doing the drainage uh for some of the roads that will be paved a, a year and a half from today. And the sidewalks are already doing the sidewalks that will get, getting paved either later this year or even next year. And that's why it opened more roads for us to pave. Um, we had a, the metrics from last year show how much more we have been doing with this. So if you guys uh keep giving us the fund, we're gonna make, make sure that will be very well spent. Um, footpath replacement also tied up with the paving program. Um, if there is a footpath on the roads that we are doing, we ended up replacing them. Um, now moving to Heather Lane Lockwood Storm Drain. Um, we request four million dollars. It hasn't been funded. Uh, but to be honest, we also applied for a grant last minute um about a week and a half ago uh through Heim's office. And we have hope that maybe we will be able to get some funding for this project. So that's why uh in case we do not, you guys are gonna see this item back in the agenda for next year. Uh, dredging marinas and easements, um, we haven't have any requests recently, so that's why we haven't asked anything for this year. Water course maintenance is where we take the money to do a lot of some um, a little bigger drainage projects that we identify that need to be replaced. So it's not a standalone project, but sometimes we need to upgrade an outfall on a specific street. Maybe we need to add a couple of more pipes when we do all this investigation for paving. And also we buy uh all the catch basins um and material from that account. Um, the, we usually, we drain all this money. Uh, New Cannon Avenue Ponos, we are still under the study. We finished the study and unfortunately, this is a very expensive project. Now we're gonna be able, um, we're gonna try to fund at least the part A that will be doubtful in the beginning under uh the baseball field. We are still on design on that because we need to see what will be the best approach. And that's why uh it's not funded for this year. Glendening and Cannon Street. It, we had just a study and now we need to move for design. There is a solution, but just to design the solution will be three hundred eighty-five thousand dollars. Um, stormwater managed plan, this is in, refers to our MS four. Um, we are engaging our consultant um for, to develop the plan for us. And then we already have some money on the ARPA to fund for that. But now this year, we see that we're gonna need probably a hundred thousand dollars extra to be able to investigate everything that we need as part of our MS four plan. Uh, Lauren Street Storm Drainage, um, we, there is also a study that was done a few years ago. These a hundred thousand dollars will be to um engage another consultant or the same one, of course, should look at it and see if what was studied before was feasible and start moving to cons- to design. Um, Glenwood Avenue Storm Drainage, um, we didn't get funded. This is still also for uh design that we need to do there. North River Flood Control, we have money uh in the account. We, we don't need anything for this year. Um, coastal resilience, we had money from ARPA funds, so uh we don't need it to use on capital. Uh, tree planting, same thing. Um, we receive funding from us over until the end of this year. That's why we're not requesting any money. East Avenue Roadway and Bridge Reconstruction, again, this is part of the advanced utility that we are doing. And we pay for the portion between four point and East Avenue Roadway and Bridge Reconstruction, again, this is part of the advanced utility that we are doing and we pay for the portion between Four Point and Olmstead. And this is uh, we need a million uh as July first to finish our, I will not say finish, but to fulfill our obligations for this year. Elizabeth Street, um we want also underground. Elizabeth Street, uh there were some projects in the area at Day Street that we did before. We have already engaged uh in our, this, we, this week, last week, we ended up already open uh an RFP. We have uh going to come and counsel the approval of that contract. And these a hundred thousand dollars will be if we need to uh fulfill more that contract or maybe start a little bit of construction. Grand Local Matching Funds, uh this money works when we have state projects and we have no participating items. Um, that's what we need to use this money for. So for instance, if we want like some type of granite curb, the state is doing a project, they were, they were not gonna fund the granite curb. We, we ask them to do it and we pay the difference. Um, green infrastructure also uses ARPA money, so that's why it's not showing here. We're about to finish this green infrastructure money with the CAF pasture beach. We use some of that to fund that project. And we were not overseeing anything happening uh by the end of this year, but definitely for the next fiscal year, we're gonna ask for money on that. Um, estate, uh no participant in city standard manages is quite of similar with our grand local matching funds. It's just that it depends on the type of project we'll take from one or the other. This year we are not asking for any, we still have a little bit of leftover. Um, the other two we never got it um funded since last year is the right of way policy thirty in the area to underground utilities. Um, and then so, and infrastructure investment cap reserve was always an account that we haven't got uh any money. We don't need enough, to be honest, for this year. And my last item is the fleet replacement. Uh originally, we asked for nine hundred fifty-five thousand dollars. Uh, there is a list of what the cars and trucks that we changed. We have a five-year forecast. Uh, we have been funded with six hundred thousand. We, I know it is a big cut, but we do understand that we had to find some money uh to be up to a certain level. So we're gonna change a little bit things in our fleet replacement for next year. We're gonna delay the purchase of a truck. To be honest, we're not gonna be too bad because as Chief Walsh stated before, it has been a nightmare to try to buy any type of vehicles. So we can definitely wait and put this truck that we are taking out from this year to next year. And I think that with that, I finished all my engineering and operations cap the request.
Great job, Vanessa. Any questions?
Thank you so much.
Thank you as well. Okay, now we're gonna move on to the Board of Education. I believe we have a couple of members. So we, good evening, Linda. How are you, sir?
I'm well. How are you?
Very well, thank you.
So I have members of the Board of Ed Cabinet that are responsible for each of these projects. Um, in total, we had submitted uh thirteen requests uh for projects. Eleven were recommended by the mayor for funding. And so we'll go through and explain each one of these projects. Uh, we did also have a request. We have one project, Brookside Montessori Program that we will speak to. Uh, we had requested three hundred thousand, uh but it was not recommended for funding. We would like to see if the committee would allow us to transfer fifty thousand from the technology project and twenty-five thousand from the schools project so that we would have seventy-five thousand for the Montessori project staying within our overall uh recommendation by the mayor.
And do you have any more details to, to back up that request?
Yes, um, each of these projects we're going to speak to.
Okay.
So uh we'll start with band instruments and we'll go down the list.
So, good evening, everyone. Rob Pennington. Many of the instruments in our current inventory are over thirty years old. And we've noticed a decline in family-owned and rented instruments. The financial burden of renting or purchasing these equipments is beyond the means of many of our families. The music programs are a highlight of Norwalk Public Schools and Norwalk in, in general. And to provide an educate, um exceptional music education program, we have to provide quality instruments. And so we are looking to replace band and strings instruments.
Thank you, Rob. The next one is uh security that Ryan um Howard is gonna speak to.
Good evening. Um, thank you, council members. Ryan Harold is actually on the phone with NPD. So um I'm going to speak on, on behalf of that request. So the request that we had put forth to the council um is part of a three-year plan to increase our uh school security infrastructure. We broke down the phases. We actually had come to you last year with a bigger request. And um luckily, we were funded at the last minute for a portion of it. And I think Ryan is off the phone, so I'm going to um turn it over to him. But we're looking for the second phase of the request and I'm, I'm gonna turn it over to Ryan so that you understand the scope of the project that's been broken down over three years.
Great, thank you, Sandra. Um, so as Sandra mentioned, um three hundred thousand dollars is part of a continuation of last year's request to increase our uh camera infrastructure within the district. Uh, the reality is many of our cameras are still in the analog system. They're blurry, they're outdated, and they need to repair. Um, along with cameras, there's the hardware, obviously, but we'll also be increasing our infrastructure through um increasing our servers. Right now, the amount of servers that we have, um we do not have any more licenses or servers uh to add more cameras. Um, as many of you guys know, our buildings are old and built very strong. Um, but this is a nightmare when it comes to um installing cameras through steel and navigating through concrete and different materials that we used in the past to build schools. Um, so this project will uh again continuation, but will give us full coverage. And really, to be honest with you, it's just catching us up to industry standards uh and giving us full coverage throughout all of our schools. Uh, a portion of that money is for Norwalk High School. Um, understanding that the school will be built down, uh will be uh broken down and rebuilt in several years. Um, the cameras that will be installed there will then give us a um a back, kind of a back order or stockpile um of cameras that we'll be able to use uh in the future. Typically, cameras last anywhere between sixty years. Um, but with the stockpile off of uh the um existing Norwalk High, we'll really be able to cover all of our camera needs for the next ten, eleven, twelve years. Uh, the next three hundred thousand dollars again is a continuation of last year's ask. And this is to install Wi-Fi, Wi-Fi door alarms uh throughout all of our buildings. Um, so all of our new buildings right now, again, industry stand, uh industry standard for twenty twenty-three is to have alarms in all doors. Controlling your exits in terms of security is really a basic foundational measure uh that we need to have. Um, so installing Wi-Fi, Wi-Fi door alarms uh will give us the ability to monitor who's coming in, who's coming out of those entrances. That might not be the main entrance, what we have, uh you know, human bodies there monitoring. Um, so again, um, this is really industry standard. It's, it's very basic. It's really just catching us up uh to where we should be already. And then the final four thousand is for a communications program, an emergency communications program called Mutual Link. Along with building our infrastructure of Wi-Fi, uh door alarms, cameras, our radio systems. Mutual Link is the system that brings it all together. So what happens is um when an emergency happens, uh first responders locally as well as the state level will be able to tap into our systems uh in their command post and see live feeds, be able to map out, uh we'll, we'll be able to grid out all of our properties um for uh, you know, really um live coordinates about where an emergency is happening. Uh, and this will be interfaced with not just NPS, NPD, but also state responders as well. Um, so we're all seeing the same things in real time, communicating in real time, all on one platform. Um, NPD received uh mutual link um through the state grant, uh as many other municipalities have, including colleges. Um, so really, in, in, in terms of, in terms of state Connecticut emergency management, this is becoming the standard. Um, and I really think it's important in uh safety and security that we're part of leading that charge uh rather than being behind the curve on that. Um, so I'll be open to any questions you might have about uh the requests.
Yeah, Ryan, I have a question. Are these uh uh security improvements gonna be done uh district-wide? I mean, I know you, you mentioned Norwalk High School.
Correct. So, so the, these acts will be, will complete, uh we're almost complete, about eighty percent of our, our properties.
And you mentioned stockpiling cameras uh in, in, in anticipation of uh of a new Norwalk High School. So you, you plan to purchase the cameras?
Clarify. So um part of this ask is to retrofit the current building of Norwalk High. Um, being that's only three or four years, when the building comes down, we'll be able to remove these cameras uh and put them into, to stock. And then when other needs come up, we'll be able to use these as opposed to purchases. So we'll be able to repurchase these in the future, uh repurpose these in the future rather than purchasing new ones.
I'm always a little skeptical about things like that. I feel like they've never come to fruition. I mean, um, I mean, either technology changes, difficulties, uh new, I mean, the software, whatever the case may be. I mean, how confident do you feel like that we could repurpose these cameras and uh down the road?
Yeah, great question. Um, so in terms of software, right now we use um Smart Client, um which is our, our, our monitoring system. And that is nationally federally top-of-the-line equipment, um which is compatible, obviously, with the uh infrastructure that we're gonna be increasing. Um, now I understand the skepticism, but right now we're doing this already uh with some of the cameras that were at the old Jefferson. We'll be using some of the cameras that are currently in Cranberry. Um, so we're currently already doing this, um but it's still not enough.
Okay. Any other questions? Okay.
Yeah. Now, Ralph, um can you speak on instructional technology?
Sure. Good evening, everybody. Um, so our, our numbers fall into four different buckets. If you want to think of it from a line item standpoint for the amount that we asked for, um our first bucket, it, as you guys are all aware, we as a district, our one-to-one school district now, it's computers. We have um with teachers and other devices. We have sixteen thousand computers um that we have to manage, which usually means on a four-year recycle, there's about thirty-five hundred machines that have to be replaced per year in order to kind of keep ourselves in a regular refresh. Um, so the initial request was for seven hundred and five thousand for student laptops. We're, um, we're looking at trying to do one less grade level and, and um we've reduced that to four hundred and twenty-five thousand. We reduced um our teacher devices to about a sixty thousand dollar ask for replacements. Um, we do have a two hundred and ninety thousand dollar um request that is for our virtual servers and our security. So we do need to make sure that that actually is in place for us. Um, our, our virtual servers, our virtual server environment um has to, is, is getting to the age where it does need to be replaced and upgraded. Um, and then finally, um, we have about twenty-five thousand dollars put aside right now for um replacement of USonic boards, interactive whiteboards and um any repairs. Well, repairs meaning an, an extra computer that's needed in, in one of our music or art labs.
Uh, Ms. Faeos will speak to the Montessori program. That's the program you're referring to, John.
Okay, I hope to um to be clear and concise. Uh, six years ago, the um the school district actually started a Montessori program um in response to some community needs. We actually had a lot of our residents going over to the Wilton program and going to other Montessori programs. So we started one here and we actually placed it at Brookside Elementary School because that was the facility that actually had the best access for the Montessori-type classrooms. So six years ago, two preschool or early-grade Montessori um classrooms were funded and started at Brookside um to a huge waiting list. Those students now um two years ago, ended up graduating out of that uh early grades. And this, again, the uh approval for the funding for the added classroom was given. We added another classroom now for those kids that are graduating out of those pre-K, grade um K and grade one classrooms into a second-grade classroom. That second-grade classroom now has enough students for a second, second-grade classroom. And then they'll remain there until they are three years from now. So the request was to actually add and expand the program that you have invested in and invested in the district from the very start. We always have a waiting list for our Montessori programs. And it actually services the students of Norwalk and um has done really exceptional in keeping our students here and our families here. So the request was for us to just have the continuation of that program. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Can you uh refresh my memory on what funding you'd like to be moved from what item to what item?
Sure. Go ahead, Linda, please.
Uh, we were requesting to move fifty thousand from the instructional technology.
What number?
Fifty thousand.
No, 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 excuse me. What number are?
Uh, on my list, it's project number three. I don't have the
Technology, okay. The, the eight fifty.
Yes.
You wanted to minus fifty from that.
Minus fifty from that. And then if you scroll down, there's a school project which is at two seventy-five. And we were asking to minus twenty-five from that so that the Montessori would have seventy-five.
And uh, and which one is the number four?
Number four.
Which uh got, didn't get recommended by the mayor.
Correct.
Um, I mean, I know you can't speak for him, but is there any specific reason why? Any feedback that you got on the reason why it wasn't funded or recommended?
Um, there, there just wasn't enough money to go around. Um, and we were tasked to figuring, figuring out how we could, how we could make. So you see that even at that seventy-five thousand level, it's less than what we, we had requested. Uh, we're looking at other funds. Possibly uh either grant funds to make up the difference, what these funds do, if you're aware. And maybe Sandra can speak more on the Montessori program. This buys the equipments uh that go into the classroom. That's what makes the Montessori program unique from other classes, but that's what we'll be using.
Okay, I guess we'll go back to that at the end. If you, if you, if you will, can you please proceed with uh?
I, I think there were a couple of hands, but if you'd like us to move forward, it's fine.
Yeah, I'd like to ask a question if I could. Um, actually, and, and but before I do, um, Sandra, I'd just like to thank you for really explaining the reasons initially uh for the implementation of the Montessori
I was the principal at the time.
And that was under Dr. Adam Mousky. And I, I always, you know, it just seemed a little strange to me because that's a private school model and why are we doing it in a public school? But you know, now I really understand it that, you know, it's really to keep those families here who we
Yes.
may have lost. So I appreciate that explanation.
Barbara.
Yeah. So uh my question that was for Ralph, um, you know, Ralph, you're losing fifty thousand out of your instructional technology. Um, you know, what's, what are you losing out on and, and, and how does that work for you?
Yeah, I mean, I, I think really, uh, you know, just in conversations in general, um we're, we're looking to see how we can actually repair machines for this year. Um, in, in the large scope of things, I mean, fifty thousand uh is, is a lot. But I, I think it's, it's, it's something that, you know, the, the Montessori program as a whole is really, really important that we continue with. And I also know that the, um, you know, as we've been, we've been trying to just look at how long we can actually hold on to our technology. So um the fifty thousand, it basically means that instead of replacing three grade, grade levels this coming year, it looks like I'm gonna be replacing two. Um, so I'm just, we're gonna have to kind of recalibrate it a little bit as we move forward.
Okay, thanks.
Hmm, Mr. Livingston?
So, yeah.
Yeah, thank you. Um, so I'm just curious. So you requested three hundred and sixty thousand and you'll get seventy-five, assuming we
Yes.
Does that, I mean, is that really worthwhile? I mean, how does that?
Well, what we could do with the seventy-five and I could actually talk to Bill Hodel about it is we could actually build out the, the classroom space that we need for it. And then we have to write grants for the other pieces that are actually the instructional materials and the other items that, that we would actually um that has been funded in the past through these projects, but, but those are the other things that we would have to um either split or um secure grants.
Well, I guess that begs the question of whether you'd be applying for those grants anyway.
Uh, we would be applying for those grants for curriculum materials, but it, it, we, the, the need for curriculum materials is great. And we would just be able to um make sure that we're carving out pieces for the Montessori program.
Right, okay, thank you.
But it would allow us to build out the infrastructure for it. The actual pieces of um furniture, the, the hardware for it. Yeah.
Well, thank you. It's a great program. Thanks.
Yeah, thank you.
I'm sorry, sorry, John.
No, no, anyone else? Uh, any questions before we move on? Okay.
Thank you.
Next is the curriculum materials and textbooks and Mr. Pennington.
Sure. So there are two items in this bucket for curriculum materials and textbooks. One of them is dual language materials. And we have four schools that are implementing the dual language methodology of instruction, supporting our students. We have Silvermine and West Rocks, and we have open classrooms at Jefferson and Brookside as well. And as those grades roll into the next grade level, we will need to purchase materials for that next grade because we start with one grade and we're supporting students and then we roll to the next grade. So that is one component is to purchase the materials for the next grade level in those classrooms. And then the second item is around social studies and the state of Connecticut is currently updating their framework. And in in talking with them, they will have some very specific content standards and some changes to their program. We'll be writing and updating our curricula around that. And then we will need to purchase materials that will support that curriculum update. And those are the two bucket items under curriculum.
The next series of projects, Bill Hodel, I will speak to beginning with the air conditioning program.
So yes, thank you. We started the air conditioning upgrade program or installation program a couple of years ago. And we are happy to receive another another funding of six hundred and fifty thousand dollars. We have almost six schools left. Now, those schools include Rowaton, Wolf Pit, Narimac, Tracy, Nathan Hale, and West Rocks. This coming summer, we are doing Nathan Hale. West Rocks, we're probably going to hold off on that since that is considered to be renovated as new. So we typically would have the remaining four schools after we do Nathan Hale this year. These programs are typically not funded by the state. However, they're changing their dynamics with HVAC grants, so we hope to take advantage of that as time moves on. The next one up here is the capital pair repairs replacements. This is valued at fifty thousand dollars. While we appreciate that, there is a lot of aging infrastructure that we will certainly use this money up probably sooner than what we actually think. The next item is the school paving for a hundred thousand dollars. We had hoped to do Brian McMahon this summer, but what we're going to do is take the hundred thousand dollars and perhaps use that at a different school, maybe Kendall. But our hopes that Brian McMahon will come up perhaps in the next year.
Hey, Bill, I got a quick question. You know, I got to ask you every year. Are we piggybacking on the city's paving contract to get the discount?
That is our goal each year. I haven't approached them yet because we're just looking at this funding now.
How has it been the last couple of years? Have we been able to take advantage of that discount?
Yes, the last school we did was Nathan Hale and it was with the discount to that group as well.
Great. I mean, as we know, it could be up to twenty five to, I don't know, forty percent cheaper to do it on top of the city's discount. So be great.
That is correct.
Make sure we take care of that. Thank you, Bill. Please proceed.
I think there's a question.
Yeah, Bill, so I I so if you don't do McMahon, does that mean you're not going to restripe it at least? Because I understand it's a real problem there.
Oh, that was already completed.
Okay, it was. Okay.
It's been restripped.
Yeah, okay, thanks.
Okay. The next one up is the fuel tank replacement. We have done eight of these. We still need more to go. Brian McMahon, West Rocks, Brookside and Tracy. So this five hundred thousand dollars will certainly come in handy. The next one up was not a recommendation by the mayor, yet that is also tied to heating replacements. We're not asking for more money on this. However, we might come back to you next year and ask for that. School projects, item number eleven, as we mentioned earlier. These are various projects that some of the principals have placed for repair and replacement. And as we mentioned earlier, some of this money would be recaptured to for the Brookside Bontessori program. The next item up is the asbestos abatement program. Here again, we are doing that every summer. This year, we're doing phase two at Roten. These projects are state reimbursable. And the ongoing program program will include Narimac, Wolf Pit and Fox Run. The last item here is Brian McMahon, the cooling plant upgrade. For those of you who don't know, both Norwalk High and Brian McMahon are central air. The entire school is centrally at minus the gymnasiums. So at Brian McMahon in particular, the cooling plant is at its end of year and end of life, I should say. And it has some major components that have broken down over the past couple of years, to the point it needs to be replaced. So while we're getting by with bubble gum and Band-Aids, the machine needs to be totally replaced. Unfortunately, Brian McMahon does not have redundancy like Norwalk High has. That is a a backup, a second chiller. So our goal is to bring in a design team, spend the next year to design these systems over at Brian McMahon and include air conditioning to the gymnasium as well. As we all know, we're all getting a new Norwalk High School, that gymnasium will be air conditioned. And we have to step it up with Brian McMahon as well, air conditioned, that gymnasium, those locker rooms as well. So we're looking for hundred thousand dollars for soft costs. That is to design a new system with redundancy. We don't look at any major upgrades happening at Brian McMahon for quite a number of years. And if we do not do anything to this air conditioning system ahead of time, we will continue to have major breakdowns. And that will affect the learning environment there. I think that's the last item on our list.
Any questions? Okay, I'm inclined to make an amendment to move this money around. I mean, I guess we'll we'll do, you know, anything pops off between now and the council, I guess, you know. It would always be, anything could be changed on the council floor, but that being said, I will now make an amendment to to deduct fifty thousand dollars from item three instructional technology and twenty five thousand dollars from item eleven school projects. And add seventy five thousand to item number four, Brookside Montessori Program Expand. Lamont, that one, excuse me. Linda, can I ask of you that you you, if this item passes, that you send Jessica an email with the specifics and so she can pass that on to Irene for Tuesday's council meeting?
Yes.
Okay, all in favor of the amendment as proposed, please raise your hand and signify yes. Darlene, are you with us? Yes, okay. That's unanimous, I believe. Right, okay. All right, and at the end, we'll vote for the item as amended. All right, great. Thank you, everyone. Very detailed. Barb, would you have your hand up? Oh, okay. Thank you, everyone. Now, moving on, I will we still got a lot left, guys, so hang in there. Now, we're going to move on to economic and community development. And first up will be Sabrina with the Arts Commission.
Hi, everybody. I have three projects for the Arts Commission and I'll try to be quick, respectful of your guys' time. So we have, the first request is two hundred thousand dollars for the Art in Public Places program. In previous years, this was a fifty thousand dollar request. We did some murals in the MLK corridor. As I'm sure most of you have seen at this point, we've also done additional traffic graphic boxes and have a plan for a Monroe Street mural for last year's money as well, that we're waiting for state approval to be able to start the install on that hopefully this spring. And then this larger request is actually for the West Avenue Gateway mural. That's between on West Avenue, that's between the mall property and Matthew's Mansion. So that would include both sides of that wall and would be kind of a very large mural. We're looking at over twenty thousand square feet over there to be able to do that. We do have a grant asked out right now that we submitted a couple of months ago. We'll hear if we have received that grant or not in late spring. We're hoping that we'll be able to cover half of the cost of the mural, but we are hopeful that even if we do not receive that grant, we'll still be able to do the project. So that is the first request. We also actually did engage with an artist already. So the cost that is outlined for you is actually the exact cost of the mural. So I just wanted to be clear on that specific ask. The second ask is a hundred and eighty one thousand for the public art inventory. This request was on the package agenda for last year, but it was only a hundred thousand dollars. We had actually contacted the National Archivists that do all of kind of the museums in the U.S. and a lot of different municipalities, public art collections. They came back with a quota proposal for us that included a hundred and eighty one thousand dollars. The reason for the increase is that there needs to be a specialty appraiser for the WPA murals that we have in Norwalk. Those are, we have the largest collection in the country and there's only a few specific people who deal with those murals and actually know how much they're worth and and how to improve them and how to categorize them. So that was the increasing cost from this time to now. That inventory would not only value all the pieces. It'll help for us with insurance purposes if any of the pieces need to be improved or need to be maintained. It would identify those for us. And then additionally, it would digitize our entire public art invent our public art collection and digitize that and make it readily available for the public. And last but not least is ten thousand dollars for a public art maintenance program. We do currently do not have any funding in place for any of the new installations of art that we have, but also our art that we have that's existed in the city forever to actually maintain those pieces. How we've been functioning at this point is that they only really get maintained if there is some larger event that happens to them and we're able to use insurance funding to cover that cost. So we're proposing having a ten thousand dollar fund that will slowly maintain our pieces as they become due and that we can keep, you know, have a reoccurring request so that we'll be able to maintain all the art that we currently have, but also all the new art that we're adding to the city. So that's those three items and I'm happy to entertain any questions you guys may have.
Okay, thanks, Sabrina.
Actually, I have a question, if you don't mind. So Sabrina, the public art inventory, though, that has not been recommended. Is this something that you will, I'm assuming you're going to ask again next year for this?
I will. There's no direct immediate need for it besides the fact that we don't know the value of all of our assets that we own in the city, which becomes an issue for insurance purposes. But it was halfway going through the budget process last year, but then it was recommended to switch the funding that was for the inventory for another item under TMP's request. So this year, if we are not going to get it recommended, we would have then asked again next year for sure.
Yeah, I because I I I think it's really important. And so, you know, I'll I'll be watching for that next year.
Thank you so much.
Sabrina, I see you only have a couple more things to speak on, on business development tourism. You want to just take care of that so you can enjoy the rest of your evening?
Sure. Not that it's much joy. I'm driving home from Florida, so I'm here. I'm here for entertainment tonight, too. So the first request under business development and tourism is a hundred and fifty thousand dollars for special events for the city. So as I hope all of you attended and remembered from this past holiday season, we had two great holiday events. One in South Rock and one in Wall Street. This funding will cover that, but plus some extras. We're hoping to do a Halloween type of event. We're hoping to kind of fund some farmers markets and a lot of other really awesome things. We are supplementing this a hundred and fifty thousand dollars with seventy thousand dollars of ARPA funding to support events. And then we also have an ARPA supported position that's coming on board to actually be the special events coordinator that will not only kind of wake up at eight AM on a Saturday and make sure everything's running great, but they'll also have kind of a planned schedule of actually city funded events that are separate from kind of what we've been doing at Parks and Rec and at the beach, but more citywide events focused mainly on kind of our downtown urban core areas. The second one is a thirty thousand dollar ask. We were funding it in the past for a fifty thousand dollars for an arts and culture plan in the city. We actually asked around to a bunch of other municipalities and to some firms. They came back with a price that was pretty solidly around eighty thousand dollars, seventy to eighty thousand dollars in most cases from municipalities that were our size. The arts and culture plan, if it was in place, would dictate where our funding should be spent to support arts and culture. One of the initiatives that's actually going through ordinance right now is the establishment of an arts and cultural commission. And that commission would actually be in charge of allocating funding based on an arts and culture plan. We currently currently don't have one in place. So that would, that thirty thousand dollars would create would add to the fifty thousand dollars that was already approved to then be able to complete the project. And then last but not least, there is no funding request this year for the micro grants program. This will be the Norwalk Innovations Program and we're actually funding that through with ARPA dollars this year. We did a pilot program last year with the Chamber of Commerce, which is essentially just a program that supports entrepreneurs in Norwalk and in hopes that we can, you know, kick some money into our startups to be able to decrease vacancy as our storefronts and also support, you know, homegrown businesses in Norwalk. So we're using ARPA dollars to do that right now and for this coming year and the next. But once that funding runs out, this capital request will be back in the budget.
I hope you're not driving and reading at the same time.
I am not. I'm with my mom. She's driving, so we're being really responsible.
Great. Any questions for Sabrina? Okay, all right, we'll save trip back or there, which way, every direction you're going.
Thank you. I'm coming back home, so I'll be in Norwalk in thirteen hours.
Bring that warm weather with you.
I will try. Thanks, everybody.
Thanks, Sabrina. Okay, so now we're going to go back up and Jess, Chief of ECD, that's you. You're up.
It is. Thank you so much. So we have one item that we're asking for funding for in this fiscal year, which is the Small Business Main Street Program. And this is the program that we have funded previously, the COVID Business Assistance Grants out of. We purchased the new garbage cans and recycling cans for Wall Street. We've purchased the banners for the neighborhoods and we've also done some of the streetscape improvements and the place making improvements with this fund as well. In addition, this account also allows us to put in fifty thousand dollars for storefront improvement program. We've we partnered with fifteen different businesses in and around our urban core to be able to make improvements to their storefronts where we've been doing a matching grant with them to be able to support those improvements along the main corridors. So we're asking for one hundred and fifty thousand dollars again this year to be able to continue that programming moving forward. And we've, we anticipate using it for, again, place making, also streetscape improvements, additional replacement banners, but we're also looking at programming in and around the South Norwalk neighborhood related to the Walkbridge Program as well. And so we think that this program is extremely important this year and the years moving forward, given the work that will be going on with that particular project in South Norwalk. And there is also the main library expansion project, which is not in FY twenty four, but it is in FY twenty six. And it is that twenty five million dollars that has been floating in the capital budget for the last number of years, which the city and and the mayor are still dedicated and committed to that library expansion. However, we have been delaying the project until we are able to put together some architectural services and be able to work with the library on what exactly that expansion will look like.
There you go. Jess, you want to finish up with historical commission? I believe you were going to speak to that as well.
Yeah, I'm also going to speak to the Building and Code Enforcement item as well. So Building and Code Enforcement is next. It's Streetscape Improvements, a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. This is actually the contract that you had approved last year for twenty twenty two, twenty twenty three and twenty twenty four with two one year extensions for meticulous landscaping. They're the group that we work with to maintain all of the parklands and urban parks in the urban core. In addition to the medians, they In addition to the medians, they, when we renegotiated the contract, we picked up Klondike Park. We also picked up all of the medians along the MLK Court, the MLK Drive and a few other areas as well. So they've been really great to work with. We've been working with them on the holiday decorations for Wall Street and also North and South Main Street in Washington. So this is a contractual obligation where we're asking for the one fifty to be able to continue that contract. And for historical, Patty, would you like to talk to and speak to the Lockwood Matthews Mansion request first? And then I can pick up the other items after that. Oh, you're on mute, Patty.
Are we okay now? Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes, okay, sorry, thank you. Obviously, this is an unusual project because it is a city property managed by the museum. And it is funded with state and, and city funds, eight million dollars from the state and five and a half million currently from the city with an ask in this budget of a million two hundred and fifty. This is a strictly a mechanical upgrade project, which was started in two thousand and eight and pieces have been pulled out through the years and accomplished. And this is the last piece for the mechanical piece. And I repeat that again, because many people think we're dealing with restoration, decorative restoration, and it's not. It's to provide heating and lights on all the floors in the building and to allow the building to be open to the public all year round, rather than just seasonal with when weather would permit. Not just in the, in the winter months when the heat is not sufficient, but when the summer, when it's so hot in there, we can't, we can't have any visitors in the building. We, as I said, this is a joint project, not only with money, but with effort and intellect and, and, and love for the structure. We have been working on this phase for the last three years. We have gone out to bid since the fall. We were forced to go out twice, first round, and we're using the city's purchasing department to do all of this work. The bids came in very high and we didn't get several trades to even bid at all because it's such a complicated project. We went out again and we now have been able to piece the basic project together and to hopefully start our construction May first. But we need this additional one million two hundred and fifty thousand dollars to, to make that all happen. We actually are currently moving out of the building with all of our fine arts are going to fine art storage in Long Island City. The project just to move out of the building is, is over half a million dollars to take our collections and to pack them professionally and safely and transport them and ensure them and protect them for the life of this project, which is estimated to be eighteen months. It will probably be longer than that, but in the meantime, we have to move the staffing out of the building and, and turn the building over to the contractors with none, without our being in the building at all. And just this afternoon, I, I have verbally finally found the location for us to move within the city. So we're very excited. It's been a long haul, but we hope that along with the mayor's support that you people will also support that needed additional one million two fifty. We have been doing this in conjunction, as I said, with the state. So on a weekly basis, we meet with representatives from the state, from the Department of Economic Development and Community Development and from Preservation Trust, SHPO. In addition to this project, we are also vigorously looking for additional fundings for side projects, physical side projects for the building. And we have garnered a hundred and fifty thousand dollar grant from a matching grant between one of our trustees and, and the state for restoration of the front doors of the building. And we have applied for a good to great grant for lighting fixtures for forty-nine thousand. We haven't heard back on that one yet, but I share that with you just to show how, how committed the trustees of the mansion are to get this facility up to where we can really enjoy the splendor of it. There any questions or comments? Happy to answer them for you. Great. So, thank you very much and I'll be packing more tomorrow.
Thank you, Patty.
Great. So Chairman Kides, I'll just cover the other historical items if that's okay.
Yes, please.
So for the Smith Street request, historical is looking for a hundred and sixty thousand. As you know, there's two buildings. There's a jail and a barn. In two thousand and ten, the jail hit a fire and two hundred and fifty thousand dollars was spent of insurance money to make exterior improvements and to seal the building, including windows. Another six hundred and fifty thousand dollars was given in a state grant through OPM to be able to make ADA accommodations for both the buildings, both the jail and the barn. There is a second phase of work that is being done on the jail, which is to finalize and finish out and restore the interior of the building after the fire. There is funding that is in place currently for fifty thousand dollars to be able to do that. The idea is that the first floor would be used for a exhibit on convicts and the second floor would be used to, on an exhibit for pottery and the pottery industry. The mayor has recommended no funding for this particular item and historical understands that the Lockwood Matthews Mansion is the priority for their funding for FY twenty-four. The third item is a museum collection and they asked for seventy-five thousand. The mayor recommended ten thousand. Usually the historical commission asks for ten thousand dollars for this particular item. There is a curator who's helping to store and catalog and do preservation on these particular items. The actual collection itself for the city is worth between four and five million dollars. And so the seventy-five thousand dollars was to reconfigure some space in the health department to be able to make room for some storage boxes for some of the materials. They understand that ten thousand dollars is the mayor's recommendation and they have project, portions of the project that they can move forward with that ten thousand dollars. The fourth item is the cemetery site work. They asked for one hundred and twenty-five thousand and the mayor recommended ten thousand. This is work for the Pine Island Cemetery, which is the cemetery in behind Lockwood Matthews. There's approximately a thousand monuments that are there. And they have used volunteers or had volunteers help them with a number of different projects in and around that Pine Island Cemetery. But they're looking for funding to be able to hire a professional restoration expert who would be able to come in and actually piece together the tombstones that have come apart or are, have come misplaced. So the professional would put the tombstones back together and then reset them. They've gone for quotes and the quotes show that one hundred and twenty-five thousand is what, well, one hundred and ten thousand is what the quote would be, is showing for. So again, they understand that the Lockwood Matthews is the priority this year and so the ten thousand will help them to put some of those tombstones back together. There's a total of seven to eighty that they're looking to actually put back together, reconstruct and set back in the ground. The fifth item is Lockwood Matthews Mansion ADA compliance. They've asked for seventy-five thousand. The mayors recommend seventy-five thousand. So the work that's going to happen at the Lockwood Matthews, there's a portion of it where they're looking to do demolition in the basement and create, build out a room down there for training. The seventy-five thousand would be to finish the design and do the demo in the basement in preparation to build out a training room for, for that particular area. But the seventy-five thousand is a little bit more important and the way that it relates to ADA is because there needs to be an additional access point, a point of egress. And so the site, this plan that they would be doing, the design that they would be finishing for the training room would actually focus on that additional egress point to be able to access the basement from an ADA compliance standpoint. And the sixth item, which is their final item, is the Works Progress Administration Murals or the WPA Murals. This is what Sabrina was talking about earlier. So the city actually has thirty-five of these murals. Only two of them have not been restored. The two that have not been restored are in the Ben Franklin School by the Crystal Theater. And the historical commission has funding for restoration of one of the murals, but they don't have the funding for the second restoration. And so they feel like economies of scale and bringing in an expert to be able to do the restoration. They want to do both of those murals at the same time. So they requested fifty thousand dollars to do that. And then, of course, the, with, with the Lockwood Matthews commitment from the mayor, the mayor is recommending zero funding. So the historical commission is comfortable with the mayor's recommendations, given the importance of the Lockwood Matthews Project for FY twenty-four.
Thank you. Any questions? Okay, last but not least, Mr. Jim Travers. And Jim, if you could please keep your explanations as brief as possible, that would be appreciated.
No problem, Chairman. Thank you. I probably should be able to get through in about an hour and a half if I, if I summarize each.
We're losing you, Jim.
So, so thank you. I'll run through as quickly as I can, sir. So the first item is the roadway design and construction. These cover, you know, citywide projects in design and in construction. I think we try to be good stewards of tax dollars in this and I'll highlight just a couple of, of, of recent successes that have come out of this or will be coming out of this. We've had recent conversations two weeks ago with ConDOT. We will design the Gregory Boulevard roadway improvements based on the East Norwalk TOD from times in past. So we'll pay for that and DOT will incorporate that in their funds. So they like the design that we, we showed. We pitched a good effort. So we're just going to pay for the design. They're going to do all the, the work. We were trying to work that into a grant, but they took it as a separate one because they wanted us to move the community connectivity grant application that we're doing. So we will do a grant application for Stewart's and Stevens Intersection Improvements. We, this is a efficiency and we're going to create a little village feel up there, but there's also a safety component as we're seeing a fair amount of pedestrian crashes that happen up there. But we, that's another one where we'll get design and we, we think that we're going to get grants. But there's other ones, County and Williams, Geneva Road Traffic Calming Improvements. We've met with the neighbors, projects such as that, that will be covered under this. The second one was not recommended moving forward in the budget, but it was two hundred and fifty thousand dollars for traffic signal equipment replacement. We did get a grant for the signal at, excuse me, North at Main. This was going to cover the new signal upgrade at North at Camp, which would have, you know, you completed the corridor of a coordinated network there. We will make interim improvements to that signal to keep it operational. The third is adding to the, the funds to, to, to do. So it's the Gregory Boulevard at Fifth Street and Martin, the, the, the roundabout improvements that, that, that were on there. We have identified and went through a procurement process for a consultant to assist with that. We have some preliminary designs. We're gathering all of the traffic information, traffic counts to make sure the community is satisfied that we have resolved this seasonally. And we will have a community meeting very shortly, but we're also, we've also been actively working on a grant that we've had preliminary approval for the build out of it. So in this, again, we're just going to be funding the design of this, these intersection improvements. We believe that we're very close to being successful to having a grant do that installation. The fourth item is new sidewalk construction. These are typically sidewalks that have been identified through the transportation master plan. And I could tell you this is probably the number one request that we get if, if you're adding these streets and networks into one that has mobility for all users. The fifth item is traffic signal enhancements. It is sixty thousand dollars. These are, you know, improvements such as for the aging infrastructure. So we, you know, we are able to keep the signal at Camp and North functioning by, by this type of funds. But these type of funds also install things, added equipment like RFPs. Today, we did install a set of RFPs on Hunter's. So Hunter's Lane, so it's those type of improvements to the traffic signal network, either for pedestrian improvements or vehicular improvements that this fund restores some of that older equipment. The next item six is Seabview Avenue Improvement. So this is a hundred thousand dollars. We did kick off a very successful community meeting to start the Seabview Avenue Improvements. And you, this is to further advance that. We will be back in front of the community in May. We're picking the location now to do the second design charrette and, and update them as well. But very excited about the, the, the outcome that's coming out. We think that we've resolved many of the concerns that they, that they brought to us in the first community meeting. So that you will be satisfying that one. Number seven is continuation of our Safe Roots to School Program. You know, there, you, one of the things that we, that we get constantly is, is, you know, when schools in session is identifying these areas around schools. And this will further that. We just recently finished the sidewalks on Highland that we added a miles worth of sidewalks connecting the entire entirety of Highland, you know, and, and it's three schools. So that's a continuation of that program. Number eight is a new item that was in, excuse me, that was, it's in our budget. It's five hundred thousand dollars. We are going to create a multipurpose track in the backfield of Tracy School that will, in peak times, a PM dismissal and AM drop off will allow for queuing back there. So it'll get the traffic off of the street, you know. I have to say that neighbors are, have, you know, have been very vocal about concerns and we've been out there numerous times in the, in the PM pickup. They're just stuck in their houses. They can't leave. It's, there's so many people and there's just not enough queuing capacity. So this will create that queuing capacity, but will also be a value add to the neighborhood. We'll create, but, but by creating a track that, that allows to go back to school. So we'll be working with the school on that creation. We have had some preliminary conversations with the assistant superintendent and the principal. So those will continue on and we'll have that one come in. Number nine is a continuation of the, a very exciting project that, that I said, and I see a background photo in Councilman Hooverman's photo. This is the continuation of the Wall Street Corridor Improvements for Phase One, Two and Three. Now Phase One will be starting construction this year. That's the Wall, East Wall Street section between Brook and Main. But this is to, to, to further that and cover additional items. We have secured over nine million dollars of funds to date. We have a six point seven million dollar grants that is preliminary approved and will be going back up next week for the final approval. So we are on our way to, to, to having this, you know, forty-year plan into, into a reality soon. The next one is the pavement markings and signage. This is a every other year program, two hundred thousand dollars. This is, this allows us to replace and refresh, refresh the existing pavement markings along, as well as crosswalks, your road signage, any of those, you, typical things that, that happen in the, within the right way, public right of way. Then item number eleven is a new item. It's East Howard Avenue Corridor and Intersection Improvement Projects. This will go from Eversley all the way up to Cannon. We did request seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars to do design. We were approved for three hundred thousand dollars. We will work, you know, should this make its way through, we will work to see what portion of that will get us to, what percent. We will work with you. Should this make its way through, we will work uh to see what portion of that uh will get us to what percentage of design. But uh it's a, it's a very busy corridor that handles a tremendous amount of traffic. It is not a good feel for pedestrian. It is by our town green. Uh, we think that we will be able to introduce that you a plan uh, you know, and but you will. Uh, with this deficiency here, you will see this item come in front of you again next year for continuation. Um, the next is the Norwalk River Valley Trail for um. This is, you know, uh for, we are looking, you, we have a number of sections done. Uh, this is you some repair and maintenance of the existing sections as well as look at continuation on. Uh, you know, we are, we will be wrapping up to uh Route one twenty-three uh in uh the next uh. Month or two. Uh, and there'll be some just uh bits that we need to to pick in from here, but then also have the next section uh that's going to come after that will get us to Perry. Um, the next is a new item. It's streetlights. We did not have this as an item in uh TNP has responsibility for streetlights. Uh, and uh this came into a realization uh this past year when uh we were driving down East Avenue and one of the streetlights was tilted. And uh we had the crews take a look at it and the base of it was rusted through. So this will uh provide us an opportunity to have that, you know, that that light is still. Non-existent today. We didn't have funds to replace that. Uh, so there'll be funds for those as well as give a a a give us an inventory uh of what we have at a conditions assessment. Of those fixtures that are out in the public right away. Uh, the next item was an item that was a new item. Unfortunately, it was not uh chosen. We will look at ways that we could maybe change, you know, move money. After uh you know, throughout the year, but I think this is valuable. Uh, this was to create a safety database. We have, we are in the. The end results of really creating a database that is going to rival that of you are of our. Uh, cities such as Cambridge, where we're looking at predictive analysis of of, you know, where our crashes are occurring, you know, how we could mitigate them. Uh, you, we, we, it's, it's a, we were, we will come to the council with a presentation of this. I think it's going to be pretty impressive. Um, but uh this would be to to add to that uh to that database uh to ensure that we have a safe road system. Um, and uh. The next item, uh continuation of uh protected crosswalks. These are the RFPs uh, you know, uh and 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 as such uh that I that I talked about before. But in this in particular instance, we are partnering with the Health Department uh for a uh a raised crosswalk. Um, on Union at the NRBT. Uh, so we're very excited that uh they 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 found value in this and and we're going to do this uh together. Uh, with this one. Uh, the next item was one that was not funded. It's a pedestrian crosswalk at Forty Cross Street. We recently created a missing connection. Uh, you know, uh from um. You know, uh on Cross Street, that's going to get us to a new section of the NRBT. We needed a safe, we need a safe way for pedestrians across the street here. This item will be, was I, it was in front of you last year, will be in front of you again uh to uh next year. Um, as we believe this is an important component for pedestrian safety along this corridor. Uh, the item number seventeen is uh Hunt Street Sidewalks. So we've been working on a design. Uh, we've designed sidewalks uh for from uh which all the way up to Highland. Those will be uh installed by DPW. Uh, when they do a paving of the street, this will get the Hunt Street section uh down to Row Eight and uh that this is, we were working on this design. So this will be installation dollars uh that will bring that um to fruition. I could say that we have a, you know, um, we had a very. Very active, very loud, a couple of community meetings for people who are really supportive of and you're looking at the need of sidewalks in this really tight community. And then the next uh items are just outlying years. They're new, but we just wanted to point you into the direction of really where we see. Our investment starting to come in in the next years. Uh, so North Main Street improvements, uh we're putting that in. That'll be an outlying year. Next year's funding, we think that we really see an opportunity to to make a reinvestment into that section of the corridor. We'll follow that up the following year with uh Wa- uh Washington Street Improvements. Again, uh really think that uh the time is come that we make a continued investment there. Uh, followed by Row Eight and Village Improvements, uh and then followed by uh Calf Pastor Beach Corridor Improvements. Uh, that was one of the items that was identified in the Transportation Master Plan. So we're trying to make sure that we are. Um, you're really identifying and directing funds that were ident- that 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 were brought to the, to us, to our. Attention by the community through uh these processes such as that. So I am available to answer any questions you have, and I spoke as fast as I can.
Um. Seeing no hands, so. Do you mind um? Also covering the Parking Authority while we got you, Jim?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Which ones do I have in front of the parking? So.
Parking garages and revenue control equipment.
Okay. So the parking garages and the and the revenue control equipment, uh parking garages is for the continue, you know, we do conditions assessments of each of our facilities. They are being. Um, uh, the the conditions assessment are being wrapped up now. I'm actually having a meeting with a consultant uh next week. Those will identify the priorities in which we need to maintain these assets in a state of good repair. Uh, and their revenue control equipment are for new parks systems uh or uh new payment systems in both the Maritime Garage. And the Sono Garage uh in. I I think those systems are long overdue. They break, I think, more than they're working. Uh, uh, and uh I think that we have an opportunity to really create a first-class environment with these uh two destinations and and um. You get people in and out in a much more quicker and efficient manner.
Any questions for Larry? Okay. I believe, thank you, Larry. Very uh done, done very well. Um. I believe I've covered everything. I think I've gone through um everyone. I don't believe I missed anybody. Um, so that brings us to the Grant finale, and that is the vote. Um, Smith uh. Opposed this item. And there was an amendment, so I will now call for the vote. All in favor for the item as amended, please raise your hand to signify yes. And that is unanimous. Great. Okay. Now, moving on. To the longest agenda item I've seen in ten years, so. Sounds like, looks like a lot of lawyers were involved in this process here. Okay, that's uh B one. Authorize Harry W. Reiling to execute a land disposition and development agreement, the LDA, together with any and all agreements and documents required thereunder. With Sono TOD two LLC, the developer for purposes of conveying a portion of Thirty Monroe Street consisting of. Forty-six thousand ninety-four square feet identified as concept property lines and. As in when shown in a certain map entitled zoning location of. Top, top, it's a. Topographic survey seventeen Chestnut, prepared for Sono TOD L. Two LLC, Nora, Connecticut, dated March fourteen, two thousand twenty-three, and prepared by William W. Seymour and Associates, B.C. Uh, the city parcel, said city parcel will be consolidated with the land of the developer identified on the tax assessments records as. MBL two fifty-five slash six, two twenty-five, that's fifty-seven and two five five. Twenty-two developer properties, together with the city property collecting the project site. For purposes of constructing within the project site, a mixed-use development containing commercial space, residential unit, structured parking facility. Sixty of which will be dedicated to the use of commuters of the South Norwalk train station, recreational area, and related improvements of the project. Pursuant to the LDA term sheets enclosed with the agenda. Wow. Um, this got Darren written all over it. Let me. Um. So, yes, um. Mr. Bedoli, I see uh, Tom, you got a question?
I just want to move the item if you wanted somebody.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Livingston. Okay, so let's uh hear about it.
All right, good deal. So I I, if you recall, last month, we introduced the the project. This is like, obviously continued from our discussions about over a little bit over a year ago. Regarding the project at fifteen seventeen Chestnut Street. Uh, before we get into the LDA terms, which is the topic of tonight, uh wanted to have Spinnaker just provide a really brief presentation, just to catch you guys back up. On uh prod- some of the product details and then answer any questions from there. So I'll kick it over to either Matt or Henry to start it off here.
Great. Thanks, Brad. Um, Matt Evertonson with Spinnaker. Um, Henry Conroy, Spinnaker is with us as well, as well as uh Colin uh from Pinefield Architecture. But I'll I'll bring you through quickly if I can share my screen here. Give you a feel for um, this is just kind of a satellite image of the area. You guys are all familiar with it. Kind of police station all the way to the right here, Monroe Street, Chestnut Street, Henry Street. Um, and this is kind of the project area. Um, that is a combination of privately owned parcels and um a portion of a city parcel um that we're discussing. Um, and this will give you the relationship. Between kind of the privately owned parcels here that aren't uh hashed. Um, and then um the city, the proposed portion of the the Thirty Monroe Street City-owned parcel that would be. Um, included in the the combined public-private partnership. Um, and changing orientation a little, little bit here. It's same Chestnut Street to the bottom, Henry Street uh to the left. This is kind of the the site. Um, it will include two hundred apartment units, about two hundred and sixty um. Uh, two hundred and ninety parking spaces, sixty of which are are um designated for um public use. I mean, I was kind of. Um, plan set that's actually in front of um zoning and and pair reviews right now, subject obviously to um your. Your consent. There's a, there's a pretty uh drastic to topography change from Chestnut Street coming up Henry Street. Um, and going towards the train station here. So this is where we changed kind of viewpoint. Chestnut's now on the right. Henry's on bottom of the screen. This is the lowest portion at Chestnut Street. Um, and we will kind of line the the street with uh active uses, but also entry into this lower portion of the garage. And we do have a. Uh, public, um, you know, kind of public, kind of private, um, public realm space, um, proposed here, depending on the use of this ground floor retail tenant, um, how how that function. Um, between the new proposed building and the existing uh historic building that was renovated a few years back. And then as. As we proceed kind of up on Henry Street, um, we'll inter- we're introducing some, you know, direct entry residential townhouse units. Um, with a entry off of Henry Street for to a kind of mezzanine level of parking. Um, and then as we continue up at the train station level. Um, we're, we're. Treat treating kind of the frontage facing the train station as kind of a public right of way, um, providing some um. Active uses, retail, and um also the entry to the upper level garage, which will include those commuter spaces. Um, and as we continue uh above the parking level, um, you got your typical. They're both um apartment um floor, but this level has some, some uh courtyard plaza for the residents. Um, and then we'll continue up to the typical floor and there's five levels above parking. And I'm happy to share some elevations, but I think more impactful will be the kind of. Current version of the the rendering here that you see. Um, this is. This is looking. Um. I guess I'm, I guess I'm. This is looking up, up in the street with Chestnut, um, going toward the right there. Um, and there's a second. Option here, kind of more closer enough.
I'm sorry, Darlene, do you have your hand up? Do you have a question?
I do.
Please.
Could you explain a little bit more? You said, I think on Chestnut, you had some active. Interactive spaces or?
Sure. So the plans of all, the plans evolved a little bit, and I know um. Um, you were involved um greatly in some of the early versions. I think this is an improvement. We've um. Previously, the amenity um for the residence was on the corner here. We decided to. Um. Swap that for a more active um retail space. Um, that would ideally help anchor that corner. And we shifted the uh kind of resident leasing office and amenity to to the kind of opposite side there. Um, but I think it kind of helps anchor the corner with more kind of a more public presence.
Okay, so my concern too, and I know um Jim Travers gave a, you know, pretty good detail of some of his um efforts with parking and traffic. But that street is horrible. So what are we? This seems like a concern to me. And I'd like to at least um. Have a more detailed conversation at some point about this, even though it may pass or whatever. I think there needs to be some more conversation about this because traffic is awful on this street. And and. I don't see it getting any better. Without a plan. Sooner rather than later.
Yeah, and I could jump into Darlene. Are you, are you done? You good?
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay, yeah. So I just wanted to address that. So I know we've been talking about that as well, and and we've been working closely with Jim Travers and Matt. And I'll talk a little bit more about it within the context of the grant package that we were able to receive from D E C D. Um, which will help enable um, you know, infrastructure improvements to mitigate the impacts of this development, the six million dollars that we received. Um, but. Before that, you know, concurrent to this whole discussion, we've been working with uh traffic consultants. So they're actually currently looking at various options to the one-way or two-way of Chestnut, along with Matt's team at Spinnaker. And so the way that the LDA is structured, so that's obviously something that's going to be part of the zoning entitlement process. Uh, Jim Travers will be looking at in detail. The way the LDA is structured is that we're requiring the developer to demonstrate that this project can work with a one-way or two-way configuration. And then um obviously if a city project should occur um to to, you know, do a more significant uh change to Chestnut Street. That can be enabled with the funds that we have from D E C D. And we're pretty confident that that's going to be um, it's it's definitely, it it functions and you know, we're waiting on the full traffic analysis, which Matt could talk about a little bit more. Um, but we're, we're, we're very focused on that as part of this whole process, and the the larger discussion will occur as part of the the zoning and entitlement process with Jim Travers.
Okay. Thank you.
And I'll, I'll just add that as part of our um. Our project at Ten Monroe Street, there was a condition of that approval to do a um on behalf of the city to do a one-way um Chestnut Street study, which um we we prepared. Um, um, Mr. Travers and his team had some feedback, and as part of this project, um, we're, we're going to expand upon that study.
Okay. I I I would just appreciate, I I mean, I know, you know, you do what you, what you can as far as informing the community. But but this sort of thing that what's happening right now in South Norwalk, I think there needs to be a few more um. Meetings or just uh. Opportunities for for residents to learn and and give some input or just talk about what's going on because it's a lot.
Yeah, and Darlene, so to that point exactly, part of the.
By the time you start this project, it will be number three, right? It'll, it'll be two. Going on simultaneously almost, or one after the other. And so it's already impacting travel, traffic, so.
Yeah, and to that point exactly, they um, the grant actually is, we're, and obviously just was part of a good practice. We're going to be doing two public outreach meetings. Um, at least uh for the um, the design process. We've actually put up the RFP for a design consultant.
Okay.
Um, hopefully you have responses in a month, and we'll be able to pick up that conversation similar to what we had during the South Norwalk TOD planning effort.
Okay, perfect.
Yep.
So Brian, I'm happy to continue to to flip through, but I think they gave a a pretty decent kind of summary of the the site plan and some some kind of conceptual images here. Um, to give you a kind of baseline for the the LGA discussion.
Yeah, that's great. And I think, you know, just picking up from there, you know, in terms of process, so obviously. What gets considered by the council is the disposition of land that we're talking about as it's city-owned property. Uh, from there, the project moves through the entitlement process and in that there's a detailed designer review phase. It's both. Uh, with planning and zoning and also our agency. So there's a lot of opportunities to kind of take a look and work with them on design. But I kind of wanted to pick up from there on the um, the deal, sort of talk about it at a high level. And then I'll have Darren Callahan's here to talk about, you know, kind of fill in the gaps from a legal, technical perspective. Um, but obviously, um, you know, the the materials that are included in your packet today are the the terms of the deal, uh the land disposition agreement, both in terms of the business terms. As well as the legal terms to effectuate this transaction. Uh, included in there is the detailed map of the proposed conveyance. Uh, the requisite easements and and all the other terms. And this was obviously a continuation of the project we discussed. Not only at the last meeting, but as I mentioned, you know, last spring at the ECD. Um, some of the things, you know, as we've gone through due diligence together with Spinnaker, uh taking a look further at the side of change just a bit. Um, the main one being uh the two-phase versus one-phase, which we talked about at the last meeting. Um, but in terms of the overall uh business terms, you know, the parcels being acquired at 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 appraised fair market value of four point six million dollars. Um, there is a a structured credit of one million fifty thousand dollars. Um, and what that is. Related to, you know, a big part of this project, and you'll know in the LDA terms, is the. is the replacement of the sixty parking spaces that, you know, are being purchased. Um, but we still need to make sure that that public parking is available. And that one million dollars calculated, just to kind of walk you through that. Um, you know, the cost of structured parking is obviously expensive. Uh, it's valued at about thirty-five thousand dollars a space for this transaction. So it's sixty spaces. That's about two point one million dollars to construct that parking. Um, the sort of delta is that the cash flow or the money that, uh, the parking authority was receiving, if we valued that at fair market value as well, was only around about a million dollars. So that covered about half of the actual cost to structure parking. Um, so what is the transaction has been structured to, you know, basically apply a credit of a million dollars, um, to that. And it's parceled out in performance payments. And I think that's a key, uh, component of this deal. So that the, the money will be escrowed and will be paid out as the parking is replaced. Um, obviously as we look in the history, we want to make sure that the parking is replaced as it says. We baked in a number of performance provisions in that. And Darren could talk about that a little bit further. But the interesting thing is, you know, what this whole product does is it unlocks a six million dollar grant from the Department of Economic and Community Development. I'm going to share my screen real quick. So you could kind of see how that's all tied together with this and, um, you know, how we structured this deal, cause it's what I would consider an innovative financing plan in order to, um, effectuate the requisite infrastructure improvements as we were talking about uh, just, just earlier. So, um, this is the, this is the grant package effectively, but it also represents a few things that I'm, I'm referring to in the LDA. So the total infrastructure investment that we're, we're actually anticipating here, or the total value is, is the budget looks is a twelve million dollar project. Um, you have six million dollars from the D E C D grant. There was the three million dollars, which was mentioned earlier, actually from last year's capital budget. That was allocated as the fifty percent match requirement to obtain these funds. Um, the value of land, which is really just the value of the land, one of the pro, one of the roads that we're proposing is a, a reconstructed station place, which is the road that abuts, uh, the train station right now, where buses currently access and cut through. Um, but we're able to actually credit that as donated value to the projects. We needed to get to the six million dollars. Because the city, um, you know, we wanted to limit the amount of cash, the city would actually have to contribute to this deal. Um, our agency actually received a five hundred thousand dollar brownfield cleanup grant um, from the EPA and, and the match that we've used is getting credited to this deal as well. Um, and then here's that million fifty that I was talking about. So the interesting thing is, you know, the credit is actually being used to leverage some grant funds. So the innovative financing plan helps us kind of reconcile that with an overall financial plan. Going a little bit further on, you know, past the financing of the deal, you know, we've been working through a period of due diligence for the developer uh, with Spinnaker and, you know, there's, has it, you know, there's some environmental contamination on site based on the history, you know, sort of in the area. And what we've agreed upon is a potential two hundred fifty thousand dollar credit. Should we be unsuccessful in obtaining additional grant funding to help with that, uh, extra cleanup that goes above and beyond our current grant? We're actually putting in for a, uh, a grant to cover everything, uh, next Friday. So we're pretty, uh, pretty confident, but you know, it's obviously a competitive process and we're going to have to see what happens. So that might be a moot point, but it is currently in the deal. Um, we've also been, you know, obviously even as I mentioned before, working closely across all the city departments to, to, you know, deploy these funds to look at the transportation impacts. And I think one of the, the nice things about this project and what we really pitched to the state is is equity as a part of this project and making sure that, um, you know, that the impacts aren't just felt by the local residents. You know, that was something we heard loud and clear during our South Norwalk T O D study. So one of the things we baked into the grant proposal is a million dollars in affordable housing improvements. So, you know, helping, uh, Jason Properties, like Columbus Court over there, um, help them with some of their, you know, deferred maintenance, structural issues, roofing, and just really trying to improve the whole area versus just obviously this project site. So I think this is really an interesting model for the state of Connecticut. And, uh, you know, it took a bit of convincing and, and negotiating with the state for them to kind of understand the nexus between, you know, providing infrastructure money for our project versus understanding that a project has community impact and, and trying to help mitigate that with funds. So we really structured this. So we have, you know, five million dollars, not just for infrastructure, but also for affordable housing improvements. Um, so that's sort of, you know, the, the high level terms of the deal. And I, one thing that I brought up at the last meeting, but I kind of, I want to re, you know, I want to emphasize again tonight. You know, this, how this deal sort of differs from past P threes, or how does it set a standard for how we should be doing P three, uh, public, private partnerships or P threes moving forward. And, you know, I think it's really focused around the concept of risk mitigation, you know, how it's different from Poco or any sort of other projects around the country that, you know, um, have, you know, had, had, had relative issues. I think, you know, it, it's really an exercise and Darren can talk a little bit about how we've been balancing in, in risk minimization. It's obviously real estate and I'd be remiss to say that there's no risk involved in real estate, particularly when you sell a property. But it's not just like you sell your house and you move on. It's a property that you've sold. And now that you want, you know, you want to make sure something that you want. And when you sold it happens on it. So there's a lot of legal requirements that we have to kind of unpack and do. So it's, like I said, it's really an exercise in risk minimization. And I think Darren's done a great job and we've been, you know, thinking about this through and through with our outside counsel for quite a long time. But what I really wanted to do is just highlight some key differences, cause I think they're very important. And I think it's, it's a, it's a good step forward in terms of how we transact these deals moving forward. Um, so in terms of risk mitigation for the transaction, you'll see in the LDA term sheet, there's a combination of various escrows, performance bonds and personal guarantees from, uh, the, you know, Clay Fowler and, and Spinnaker themselves. Uh, so there's a lot of, uh, you know, incentives to make sure that we not only, you know, get the product that we want, it's done in, in, in accordance with the terms of the land disposition agreement. Uh, it's definitely very important to note, a key difference is that in this project, the, the developer is paying fair market value for the property, uh, as opposed to, you know, being given land. Uh, I think also, you know, one thing that's being created as, as part of this is an escrow account, as I had mentioned before, to issue performance payments. So there's going to be a million dollars held until we get our parking back. It'll be dispersed in, in increments as reflected in the, the terms. But it's still an incentive to make sure that we're getting what we said, you know, we all agreed upon at, at, in this transaction. Um, only can, and one of the things too is that the, the deal is structured to only convey the property once zoning approvals are in place. And there's a permit ready letter issued. So we're not looking to stagnate this project. Uh, the developer, we're not, you know, they won't be in default before they go into that. And Darren could speak a little bit more to that. Um, and, you know, I, I can't, you know, not mention, we're working with a thoroughly vetted Norwalk-based, uh, company with a demonstrated history of performance. Um, and, and as I mentioned before, I just, I do want to say, and, and Darren, this is your sort of introduction, so you're ready. But I really just appreciate all the work Darren did on this, you know, especially as John mentioned, writing that resolution language alone was probably um, a, a, a very fun exercise. But this is, these are very technical exercises. And, and we've really worked together to, to figure out a way and, and you've done a great job of thinking through a, a lot of details. Not only in terms of this deal, but also in terms of, you know, how we interface with the grant and their requirements. So I, I'll just kick it over to Darren, if you're ready, if you want to talk about some of the more technical things in the LDA that I might have missed.
Yeah, the, uh, thanks, Brian. Um, you covered, uh, quite a bit of stuff. So, um, it's been a long meeting. I'll just try to be really brief. Um, we focused on, um, uh, again, risk mitigation and also um, making sure that this project, um, has a, has a timeline that, um, is, is both fluid. But, um, uh, the project is, um, you know, started and completed in a timely manner. So there's two, two goalposts that we worked hard on. So just, uh, project timeline. Um, just to, to jump off that, um, zoning, as you know, uh, the developer's already in zoning. Um, the, the estimate for, um, uh, zoning approval, um, or at least what the contract will require. Um, absent, you know, certain excusable delays, uh, will be three months from execution of the LDA. Um, so we're, we're, we're jumping off pretty quick, just as far as getting land use approvals. Um, the closing we have phased in around nine months from execution of the LDA. It's just because there's some work to do, uh, on the land. It's going to be conveyed, uh, to the developer, uh, by, by the, uh, quotes by the city, but they already will do the work, um, pursuant to a deep grant. Um, my, my guess is that the closing might actually occur, um, you know, before that nine-month mark. Um, and that puts, uh, the building permits being pulled by the developer, uh, around the fourteen-month mark post-execution. So sometime around, uh, you know, late spring next year, uh, they're, 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 they're pulling a building permit and putting a shovel on the ground, um, which is pretty exciting. Um, so founding, the foundation permit, uh, the, 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 the foundation finish up their contract documents and, um, pull the building permits sometime, uh, maybe midsummer. Um, I'm guessing Matt can correct me if I'm wrong. And then the construction timeline is basically twenty-four to thirty months out from there. So, quick calculation, it's about three to three and a half years. Um, give or take, uh, timeline to, to, to C O. Uh, and when we have, uh, the public start to build a park in a structure parking garage. Um, we put it in an outside date of five years, um, absent, you know, really uh, situations that are just, uh, completely, um, you know, would occur that you couldn't contemplate, um, as, as outside type parameter. We, we built those in uh, specifically to address sort of things that could just happen, um, in the, the construction process. For example, a easy example would be an appeal of a zoning approval. Um, but so those are the goalposts we worked on from a time, time standpoint. Um, we won't convey the property until all the, the, uh, zoning approvals, um, have been, um, obtained and the developer satisfied, uh, with them and that there's, there's no longer a right to terminate the contract. Um, as, as also mentioned, you know, the, the contract, obviously, not only uh, any termination provisions will have, have to expire at least for convenience. Um, you know, there, the, no, no pending default will, you know, it, it also have to be fully compliant with terms of the contract time of the closing. So there'd be customary, um, closing conditions for a project's nature, uh, in, in the agreement. They actually get quite, quite extensive. Um, but the, but the, uh, the main ones will be that they'll have to have their financing in place, their land use approvals satisfied and, um, that there are any termination rights. Um, to terminate, you know, a lot of, will have to have expired. Um, Brian went over the funding, um, for the project. Uh, I would just kind of piggyback on that slightly, uh, that, you know, we are, uh, we are accrediting back, uh, just north of a million dollars, um, to purchase the, the parking, um, uh, in the garage. Uh, so we're, we're, we're getting full value and we're purchasing back, uh, with a portion of that full value. A little north of a million dollars to, to, to purchase that. Um, and the way we're doing it, um, um, really facilitates, um, the, um, securing the obligation. So, uh, it's, it is an escrow as, as Brian mentioned. Uh, we will be advancing against the escrow at, uh, twenty percent, um, completion of construction increments. Um, at twenty percent clips. So, um, twenty percent completion construction, two hundred thousand dollars, forty percent, uh, four hundred thousand dollars, so forth and so on. Uh, but that, uh, it, those will be advances that won't be earned until the time the C O is, um, is actually issued. Uh, so they'd be subject to, to call back if, 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 if for some reason that, that didn't occur. Um, additionally, we're securing it with a performance bond, um, in the same sum of one point five million dollars. And a, um, a, a, uh, personal construction guarantee that has no, um, dollar limit on it. Uh, so we, we have multiple forms of securing the project and we had to think a little bit out of the box to do it. Um, uh, Brian, you may have mentioned this, but, uh, the developer will be providing temporary parking during construction. Uh, a lot will be available, um, you know, through closing and, and, and a probably until they start to mobilize. Uh, but before, uh, we lose access to the lot, temporary parking has to be available. And I believe that there's, um, uh, agreement on location for that. Um, the actual parking itself, uh, will be secured by an easement. The easement will, uh, all mortgages, uh, will be subordinated to the easement. So it'll be first to right, uh, encumbrance on the property. Won't be subject to foreclosure. Um, and that's, that's, that's pretty much it. I mean, Brian, you, you covered most of it. Um, if anyone has any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Yeah, uh, I'll, I'll agree, cause it's like, but, um, I spent a fair amount of time with, uh, Brian and Darren and I guess two points. One, I really want to commend both of them. Uh, one of the things we talked about when we started this is to make sure we did not end up in another Poco situation. And I, I have to say, you guys have, you know, every time we talk about it, you guys have done everything in your power to avoid that type of situation. I really appreciate that. I think it's really done us, done a great service to the city with it, that. Um, I also want to just commend Brian for your financial acumen for, for, once again, putting together a deal like this in terms of your, your financial wizardry and, and making this, uh, the grant work. So I think we're very fortunate to have you there and, uh, not to make this a total love fest. I think you guys did a great job. So thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Very much.
You actually bring up a good point that I just wanted to jump on to. Tom is just making, Darren might have played, you know, talked about it. The, the grant and the project are intrinsically linked. And I think that's an important thing. We talked about it a little bit last time. But the grant is dependent upon the delivery of these units as well. So there's a lot of terms in there that are actually related to that. And we, we concurrently to negotiating this deal, we had to negotiate with the state in terms of what that looked like. Cause we were actually the only product, one of the only projects that was funded for infrastructure. So in the event of a default, what are they, how are they going to come back for infrastructure? So we, we got a lot of relief in that regard, which we're really happy with. And it was, it was really a tiresome effort to get to that point. But some of the things that we were concerned about to Tom's point, um, you know, we're, we're alleviated. Now we have about a ten-year performance period on that. So we're feeling pretty good. So I don't know if there's anything Darren, you wanted to specifically mention, just for everyone's benefit here on, on top of that.
Uh, you know, you know, I, I don't want to get too, uh, down the weeds, but we were able to also mitigate, um, it, it took quite a bit of effort, um, in, in, in Brian, um, leading the charge there. But, um, we were, we were able to really mitigate, um, the exposure on the grant side as well. Um, should, you know, should, should there be, uh, unforeseen, unforeseen situation? So, um, I think we've, we've structured a deal that, that, um, I, quite frankly, mitigates risk as much as either Brian or I could figure out how to do, um.
Thanks.
Darlene is here. Have your hand up?
Yes. Um, so I really just wanted to, to, I guess I'll jump on this love boat of Tom's. Um, but I really want to, uh, commend Brian and his team. And, and just for the whole project. You know, it, it, it's about the community and the fact that you were able to really help, um, with Columbus Court because they are in the T O D. And you listen to the concerns of the residents, um, in the area. So I really have to commend you on that, Brian. Um, and I appreciate that. And, and I think that's something that needs to really be known that, um, we spoke and you, and you listened and, and, and because of that, Columbus Court will see some positive change.
Thank you. More to come in that regard.
Yeah, I know I bust chops, but you guys really do, um, pay attention to detailing. I don't know if all of you know, this project's been, you know, started a long, long time ago and to see it here and is as clear and buttoned up as it is, it's, um, it's a huge task. And so far you guys are doing a great job. Any other questions? Okay, um, Mr. Livingston moved the item. Now I will be now calling for the vote. All in favor, please raise your hand and say if I yes. It's unanimous. Great. Okay. And, uh, brings this time to be two is the referral of advanced city parcel referred to in section two B one of the agendas and planning and zoning commission for an eight twenty-four review and report. I don't know how much in the weeds we need to get into this, but, uh, this was just, we're requesting that P and, um, planning and zoning, uh, um, review this as part of the eight twenty-four. Anyone want to elaborate on that?
Yeah, John, just really briefly, uh, because it, it's, uh, the sale of, um, city-owned property. It requires a, um, a review and report by the planning and zoning commission for consistency with the P O C D.
Any questions?
You want a motion, John?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Livingston. All in favor?
I.
Unanimous. Great. Okay. Thank you, Darren. Thank you, Brian. Thank you, everyone that worked on this.
Thank you.
Okay, um, item three, Brian, maybe stick around for a second until you leave. Well, there is, um, this, this item came on to the agenda prematurely. Um, it should be on next week's, excuse me, next month's agenda. Is that correct, Brian?
Yeah, that's correct. You just did the hearing today and then you'll do it. You'll consider this at the next month.
Okay. So no objections. I will now call for motion to table this item to our next E C D meeting. All in favor? Yeah, uh, Yeah, uh. Sorry, did someone say something? No, oh, so I thought it was on there. Okay, the motion passes and items table to next meeting. Um okay, item C, and that is all the resume here that we're really concerned into a lease agreement as such, other documents necessary to lease thirty parking spaces. From the Norwalk area. Number five eighty-eight Fraternal Order of Eagles, Inc., for two years for annual rent of twelve thousand six hundred with three options to extend the term. For a period of one year each at mutual agreed-upon rent account number to be decided. Uh. Jess, will you be speaking to this item?
Yes, I will be. And um Darren, yet again, has helped with the his magic on this one as well. So um we've been working with the library over the last number of years to be able to think about the expansion um that. Uh I mentioned was in the FY twenty-six proposed capital budget. And um we've worked with Stan Tech over the last number of years to be able to put some renderings together. But regardless of um of the expansion or not, the library. Um we've been working really closely with the library board and they are in need of additional parking. And so we've been able to um with the help of of Darren. Secure um an agreement with the Eagles club, with the Eagles, which is right directly behind um the Belden. Uh library, main library, to be able to lease out or secure thirty of their parking spots. Um for a total of thirty-five dollars uh a month um for the parking, which equals twelve thousand six hundred dollars for the year. So that um. Funding or that cost would actually come out of the library's operating budget. And um they are uh very excited to be have the additional parking spaces. Because they feel like they um are under pressure a little bit for providing parking. The strategic plan that was done a number of years ago actually pointed out that the library patrons find the biggest obstacle and barrier to getting to that library is the parking. Um and so the library's been working very hard to be able to understand um different ways to be able to secure additional parking. So, you know, we're really grateful for the Eagles to be able to work with us in a meaningful way um to allow us to um agree to leasing some of the parking. Um and uh and the library is very excited about um the opportunity to be able to lease that parking as well. And so um the, I guess the question is, how does it relate to um? The uh option on eleven Belden, um which is um the property that is next to three Belden. Uh the first taxing district property um that our business development center is in. And so um the city has yet to determine um if they were are going to exercise that option or not. We actually don't need to do that until August the thirty-first of twenty twenty-three. Um and so there is additional time to be able to figure out if that option will be exercised or not. But the parking is really um independent of that option to a certain extent where the library knows that they need more parking to be able to. Um bring more families in and have more patrons at the at the um that space itself. So um again, really happy to work with Darren um and really grateful for the Eagles to be able to to offer the city um. That rate for parking and uh and they've been really gracious in working with us. So um Darren, if you wanted to fill in any gaps or if anyone has any questions, Darren and I can answer.
Darlene, is your hands still up for this?
Yeah, so um. You said the parking would cost how much? Twelve thousand a year?
Yeah, it's twelve thousand six hundred dollars.
I- i- and is that, did it have a term on it or? It's pretty, go ahead, I'm sorry.
That's okay, Darren. What is the term? I think it's um the term of the agreement. Oh, you're on mute.
Sorry about that.
That's okay.
Um it's it's a two-year agreement. Um the rent's stable for the first two years. And um what what we basically agreed to or what what the deal was. Is that it could be renewed on the same terms and conditions except for rent, which would be, had to be mutually agreed upon. So um both parties would have an opportunity to come back and um it'd make a change to that amount. What whether whether that, you know.
Goes up for that.
Could it could it be in the same amount?
Okay, all right, thank you.
Is uh the the uh library gonna be charging? Um patrons of the library for parking?
We actually, um so the parking lot right now um for the library has gates that are um las managed and maintained. Um and the during COVID, we did not charge for um parking in the library parking lot. So I think that's yet to be determined. Um it hasn't been, we have a little bit of time to be able to figure that out. But the um infrastructure is there to be able to charge for that parking.
Maybe we could uh make this a wash as far as cost. Uh Jess, I don't see a um an account number. Does this have to go to like finance? What's uh?
No, it doesn't need to go to finance because it's not an ARPA. Um it's not an ARPA item. And there is actually um an operating account that was provided by Sherrell Harris for um the library. And it should have made it into the agenda. Um let me just take a look.
And if not, will it be there um?
It one hundred percent, yeah, it will one hundred percent be there for um the common council. Because um it is in our email. And if we did not include it, it was just a mistype in. Oh, no, there is an account number there. Account number um zero one six two zero zero hyphen five two six five.
Yeah, the problem is my my uh my memo, I think, kind of as a blank. My apologies.
Oh, that's our fault. Sorry about that, Darren.
So it'll be there Tuesday. Okay, perfect.
Yep.
Any other questions? All right, all in favor, please raise your hand. Say yes. Unanimous, great. All right, I want to thank everyone for all your time. I know it's been a long night, but we got a lot done. Um appreciate it, appreciate y'all. Uh that being said, do I have a motion to adjourn? Thank you, Mr. Shanahan. All in favor?
No, I want to say some more.
Thank you, everyone. Thank you.
Good night.